All right, good evening, everyone. It's 7:00 and we're going to get started. Well, I'd like to welcome all of you to the Bloomfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of August 8th, 2023. I'd like to give you just a brief introduction. The Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments made by neighbor associations will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but is not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific requests before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. So, thank you, and I'd like to ask for attendance.
So noted.
I would also like to get approval of the minutes, or at least any discussion around minutes?
So moved.
Motion, yeah, second.
All right, I have motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Motion passes. I also like to make sure that everyone is aware that number 18, which is, address is 2445 Franklin Road, has been withdrawn, so if anyone's here for that, we want you to know that upfront. All right. Okay, so, we can get started. We have 3637 Walbridge Drive. Is the applicant here? Great.
Good evening to the board, and thank you for having me come back. I was here two months ago, and I was attempting to construct a secondary structure that would function as a garage. I currently have an attached garage. Unfortunately, my mother has a fairly significant mobility impairment, and I would like to be able to park a vehicle in my primary garage that can then only use one spot in order to allow my mother to actually exit the vehicle. And I would still like to park, especially during the wintertime if possible, cars in a secondary structure. Since the meeting, some of the feedback that I received from my neighbors was that they felt it might be a little too close to the lot line. So, I did revise that, and I pushed it another six feet, sort of the maximum distance. As you can see, it lines up with the other garage that's at the very, like, southern tip of the house. And then also, I made the garage smaller. It was 24 feet long by 23 feet wide, and I've made it 22 by 22 feet in order to try to comply and take into account some of my neighbors' feedback.
Are there any questions from the board? Okay.
And I should say that that rendering, the previous one, the garage, will be fairly significantly now further over to the left, and not as close to the lot line as that drawing shows.
Okay, if there are no questions from the board, I'd like to open it up to the public. Would anybody like to speak to this item? Okay. Well, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any other questions or any discussion.
I did want to compliment the applicant. It appears that he's reduced the footprint of this accessory structure by about 16%, which is not insignificant, and moving it away from the lot line is also helpful. Unless anybody else would like to comment, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Please.
Okay. Madam Chair, with regard to the request at 3637 Walbury Drive, dealing with the permission request first, I am going to move that the permission request be approved as submitted. Based on the information submitted, the applicant has demonstrated all of the compliance, all compliance necessary to comply with Section 42-7.6 standards. The accessory structure is not going to hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to its size or location. With that having been addressed, I would move to the dimensional variance and move that it also be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because, as time has gone by, the obsolescence of homes has creeped into those that are much older due to the needs of the population to age in place and to assist in older family members joining them, all instead of sending them off to nursing homes, as we used to do. This has required this applicant to make some considerations that otherwise would not have needed to have been made, and this certainly, compliance certainly would be then unduly burdensome. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. This is not going to decrease property values, and frankly, after it's been there for a few years, people will forget they've even had the issue. Unique circumstances of the property, I think, have been demonstrated. They do have size constraints. We've got a large home that consumes a good portion of the lot. The ability to add a second structure on the property is limited, and the need to create shelter for aging parents is not something that is new to most of us, and therefore is not something that is self-created. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and a single-family affidavit must be submitted to the township, and permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Can I ask a question? Are we going to require any landscaping on this?
I'm not sure how you require landscaping on a garage that requires a driveway.
Well, you can, on the other sides, because it's pretty open at some point.
I would like to mention, if you could go back to the rendering, I did try to take that into account, so if the top-left picture is the only neighbor that could even have a sightline, would be my neighbor to the south. The top-left picture is what they would be looking at. I'm looking to have the landscaping look identical to that rendering, and then the only other sightline anyone would have is from the front. The top-right photo, I guess if you're standing probably 100 feet or so back on the street. But my goal is to have it landscaped very nicely.
And you're going to have the arborvities that you're showing there as well, on the bottom picture?
Oh, that's in the back. That would be, I would likely use ornamental grasses, I believe, but that side faces Squirrel Road, so there's no, quite literally, there's not a single neighbor or even myself that has a sightline to that, and there's a fence between that and Squirrel Road. If you go back to the aerial photo, you should be able to, you see there's, and there's actually a fence line and a very heavy tree line, so there's absolutely no sightline onto the east portion of my garage, which is the rear.
As I recall, a neighbor was here complaining at, you know, your original proposal, and so they've seen this and are making objections.
Yeah, so I've made an effort to speak with every single neighbor that voiced a complaint. I wanted to explain how it looked. There was a misconception because it must have mentioned fireplace. They thought it was an actual living space, but it's just on the outside, something to make the garage look more attractive. But I think, hopefully, we worked through as many as those. One neighbor did mention they wanted to be attached, but it simply is not possible with the way the house is laid out. There was just not a way to attach it.
Okay, well, I have motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number two, second tabled item, 2515 Crofton Court.
Yes, good evening to the board. Larry Gregorica, my wife Susan back here. We're asking for a variance on installing a shed on our property. Like the previous gentleman, I was here in June, and a number of comments were made on asking me to make the shed smaller, which I, which we did. We went back, talked to the shed people. I originally came in at 192 square feet, a 16 by 12. I made it smaller, 10 by 14, which was about 27% reduction in size. And I think the main thing that I got from the last meeting was really the height of it. The height of it was around 14 foot tall. We were able to shorten that up to about a nine-foot height in size, which honestly, it was too tall in the first place. I totally agree with that. That would not have looked good in that neighborhood. So, having, asking to have this shed in the northeast corner, what I'm trying to do is eliminate any of my neighbors from seeing it when they drive by, except for the neighbor to the south of me will be able to see it. But there's enough evergreen trees that are planted in there now. I'm tucking it in there, so, but I do plan, I'll plant a few more trees in there, so she absolutely would not be able to see it. So, that's what I'm asking for.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Well, then I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Yep, please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Annie Ellis, and my husband would be here tonight, but he is not well. We are the next-door neighbors at 2525 Crofton Court, and I appreciate that our neighbors have downsized their plans to something that the neighborhood considers a shed now. Nonetheless, I and some other neighbors cannot imagine how the shed can be shielded 12 months of the year from residences and Square Lake Road. I also really don't like the idea of having to complain about whether it's sufficiently shielded or not. I submitted pictures that show the backyard's view that would be affected by the building of the shed. I also attached photos that show that much of the Square Lake Road screening is composed of vines and brush that die off in the winter. I wonder if our neighbors seriously considered the cost of adding a small addition to their two-and-a-half-car garage to make it a three-car garage, or the cost of renting a storage unit, as many people do these days. I don't think a storage unit would be suitable because I believe the shed is to store a tractor with a front loader on the front, which they currently store in one of their garage bays. I also want to clarify from the record at the last meeting where Mr. Carley said our neighbors wanted to store a backhoe in the proposed shed, and that was vehemently denied. But again, tractor is the more appropriate term, and it was just in the side yard last week, so I assume it's being kept in the garage. The tractor is, as I say, sometimes stored in the north side yard and is most likely in the garage. It's not the same piece of equipment as a zero-turn lawnmower. I think both the tractor and the lawnmower are overcompensating for our small lots. I don't think they're really necessary, but that's not my business. That's their business. If they want them, that's fine. I and other neighbors think the Gregoricas are nice neighbors, and we're impressed with all the hard work they've been putting in to make their property beautiful. So while not wanting to encourage the building of sheds to storage large equipment or even boats on these small lots, if the board thinks the shed is appropriate, and our neighbors are willing to put the shed next to their home and behind their garage on the north side of the house, I and at least three other neighbors involved here could live with that. The only serious screening needed, if they, in this alternative location, would be on the north side of the shed and facing Square Lake Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Volker, members of the Board of Zoning Appeals. My name is Gary Carley. My wife and I own Lot 4, which is 2555 Crofton Court, and on the map, the fourth lot from Square Lake Road. My wife and I also own the Heathers Club, which is across Square Lake, directly across the street. As you can see, Crofton Court meets the entrance and exit road for the condominium associations on that side, on that side of the road. As owners of both those properties, the Heathers Club of Bloomfield and my own home, and representing tonight, all of those homeowners who are opposed to this proposal, they've expressed that in a letter that I think you've received. Similarly, you have received Mrs. Ellis's letter indicating her opposition, and Nancy and I, my wife and I, emphatically are opposed to this, to this proposal. This accessory structure, which is 10 feet by 14 feet by 9 feet, is actually 15 feet. If you look at the drawing of the west wall, you'll see that it's really 15 feet. There are two objects on either side that extend the size of the wall to 15 feet, but it may be that you don't count that 6 inches on either side. That's something you would have to tell us about. The major reason why we are opposed to this building, as I call it, is because it's simply way too large for this, for this seat. This site, I mean. I said that the problem of this building is too large. This proposed structure is like that of a one-car garage. The width of a single car typically is 14, 12 to 14 feet. That means that a small car can fit in this, in this proposed structure. I just checked myself. One of the small cars that is involved is a Chevrolet Trax. It's about a half a foot shorter than the length. It's nine feet wide and five and a half feet tall, so it unquestionably fit comfortably inside this facility. Section 42-5.1 of the Chartering Township Code provides that the necessary structures shall be screened from adjacent residences with evergreen and deciduous material, which will obscure the view 12 months or a year. I heard the applicant acknowledge and admit that there won't be any screening on Ms. Ellis's, Mrs. Ellis's side. In addition, we know that there will not be, and is not now, sufficient screening on the Square Lake roadside, which is the north side of this property. There is, there are trees and shrubs there, but in the winter, as you know, they lose their leaves, and so during the four or five winter months, you'll be able to see right through Square Lake Road, right from the Heathers complex and right from the Heathers Club onto this large building, and we're not, we're not at all pleased with that. The applicant's plans show that the views of this accessory building will not be blocked from, from the south side, from Mrs. Ellis's side, and consequently, on that, on that basis alone, I would request that you not approve this tonight without having significant landscape built in on that south side and on the north side to make this building truly It is my, our understanding that the applicant might wish to use this building for the purpose of storing a John Deere tractor and a wide lawnmower in that, in that proposed building. Whether that's the case or not, we don't know. At the last hearing, when we were here last time, the question was raised, and I think it was you, sir, that raised it in terms of, why doesn't the applicant just keep these two pieces of equipment if that's all there is? Why doesn't he just keep those pieces of equipment in the two-and-a-half-car garage? The feeling was that that equipment would fit there, and we'd not have to build this new building to do that. In addition, there may be other things, like the car for all I know, that they may wish to store in this building. Interestingly, there is a three-foot ramp, which you'll see on your drawings, into the, into the building, and that would suggest that there is some kind of movable equipment that are vehicles that are intended to be stored there. The applicant has not come forward to indicate what, if anything, he intends, and she intends to store in that, in that space. And it would seem to me that that, too, would be a prerequisite to your approval of this, of this item.
Is that all you have there, sir?
Let me just finish my presentation. We are hopeful that the applicant does not plan to drive vehicles in and out of that space. We don't know whether the intention is to drive those vehicles around the applicant's yard, or whether the intention is to drive them out of the facility and then across the lawn, out onto Crofton Court, or maybe even seek to gain access to Square Lake Road itself. If there is movable equipment there, what's it doing there unless the applicant wishes to use it, and that it's apparently too big to use in the, in the, on the lot that the There's another problem, and that is, this, this facility, this proposed building, this proposed shed, if you will, doesn't blend with the remainder of the house. The house that was built by David, and as I mentioned last night, David Kellett, and since then has also served as the house for Gil Cox, famous lawyer in Troy, who's died recently, and that house was then sold to the applicant. That house was well-designed. It's a mostly brick house with some siding. By contrast, there is no brick. There is no brick on this, on this proposed shed, and so the two will not match, they will not blend, they will contradict each other, and there are other people that will see it, not just, not, not just Mr. and Mrs. Ellis, but anybody who drives down that street will, will see it. Anybody from Square Lake Road will see it because it's not shielded now. Anybody from the golf club will also see it. And we think that, at the very least, this meeting should be adjourned so that these questions could be addressed, and further, that, that one of the questions that should be addressed is how do you achieve, how do you achieve a blending of the two buildings so that the one building doesn't stick, stick out? So, here's my conclusion. This storage building, if built, will also be unattractive to the drivers and passengers who leave the Heathers every day, because they'll face right, right at. The view across the street from the Heathers will be this storage building rather than the beautiful and tranquil setting of Crofton Court. This will serve as a disadvantage and as a negative for residents, visitors, and prospective buyers in the, in the Heathers community. For all the reasons that I've stated, we would respectfully request that you deny this request the evening, this evening, and send it back for further study and the recommendation that is closer to what I just covered.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak to this item? Okay, we can have the applicant come back? You can address any of their concerns. I know there was a lot about screening and the size.
How much time do I have to respond?
As long as they had to present?
Perfect. Annie, I want to thank you for the kind words. You are also fantastic.
Sir, sir, you have to direct to the board, sorry.
She's a great neighbor, too.
And before you make your comments, let me just make sure, since there were no other interested parties to speak on this, I know I'm closing the public hearing. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
All right. Moving the garage up, behind the garage, I do not have an issue with. My wife and I talked about it a number of times.
Before you go on, I just want to be clear on what we're talking about. So, the last time we were here in June, can you use the pointer to show me on there where you were proposing putting it?
Well, today, I'm proposing to put it where it's in yellow.
The yellow spot is.
Right.
Okay.
And if we would move it behind the garage...
If you want to use the pointer, maybe, you got to press that red button and hold it down.
We're talking about hiding it right here, right there, behind, this is the garage, so we'd be putting it right about where the B is on existing blue spruce. Now, putting it there would hide it from absolutely everybody in the neighborhood. Nobody would, could see it driving by, at their house, anywhere on their property. So I do not have a problem moving it in that position. Also...
In that case, would a dimensional variance be required?
It'd still be an accessory structure, and it's in the frontage?
Because it's on the corner.
Even, even though it be adjacent to the house?
There's no issue with it being adjacent?
It's still going to be, well, we'd have to determine the exact location with that dimension, but still, it's going to be within the frontage of East Square Lake Road.
Because it's, because it's an accessory structure and not physically, I mean, putting it adjacent to the house is not connecting it to the house.
Yeah, it's just, you know, if you went back from the setback...
Well, the issue then...
From the front, it's on the side yard once it gets there.
The issue on the dimensional variance becomes easy, because then it's just, you got, you got two front yards. That's, that's easy to deal with when you deal with practical difficulty.
Yeah, but my question was, does it then put it in the side yard?
No.
No, it's still front.
No, it's still a front yard.
Because it's behind the frontage of the house.
Well, in theory, the garage on this house is in the front of the house. So you'd be adding to the non-conformity.
Also, is there a minimum 10-foot dimension from your house to an accessory structure?
No, there's not a specification.
Okay.
That's insignificant.
Yeah, I drove by this after the first meeting that we had, and granted, it was July, so on Square Lake, all of that greenery was filled in, but looking at the picture that was submitted by one of the people who made public comment, I am noticing, because at the time I drove by, I didn't stop to notice whether they were evergreen or not, and from the photo, they're not evergreens, and so then I would have concerns in the wintertime. Because candidly, when I drove by, I thought, this is very... Because candidly, when I drove by, I thought, this is very shielded and no one's going to be able to see it, and it's right in the corner, and it's on a small court street, and you would just have that one neighbor who you would have to shield from with, with additional greenery from that neighbor.
Right.
So, you know, at, at the time, I thought, this seems like something that I would be in favor of. And now, seeing these photos, I mean, you're saying that even if you move it there, the existing blue spruce is going to cover it, but, I mean, considering how big it is and knowing, you know, I, I don't know how old your blue spruce is, but I can't imagine that it fully shields it from everybody's view coming down Square Lake.
Well, if, if you draw down Square Lake, you would have seen, first of all, in our front yard, there would have been probably 15-foot arborvitae.
Yes.
Go all the way across and actually make the turn.
Yep, yep, and that's exactly what I did. I turned right onto the court.
Perfect. There's 60 feet between Square Lake Road and my, where my property starts. In that 60 feet, you are absolutely correct. All there is is vines and trees and, once you get into our property, there is a line of blue spruces all the way across the north side, all the way across the back. So, the previous owner did a really nice job of landscaping it through there. So, if we would put the garage.
Right there.
Or, or the shed, you know, right behind the garage, it really would be invisible at that point. You would not see it from the Heathers, you would not see it from people driving out of the Heathers. I walked it the other day, walked the Heathers and made sure that when I came here today, I, I really got a good eye view of what my neighbor here was asking, or was stating, that when they pull out, they would see it. They absolutely would not see it.
Well, and the other observation I'm going to make is that by reducing it in size, especially the, the height, it makes the ability to plant arborvitae to the height of the building far easier to accomplish.
I have a question. So, if he's agreeable to moving it to that location, what are we really approving at this point?
You'd still need the.
Permission request.
You'd still need the permission request and the dimensional variance because it's in the front yard. But you would require, you would require evergreen screening.
The finishing siding or just add, add screening, right?
Yeah.
And, and, actually, I think, I think there, I know there is now, if we would move that
shed over, there is evergreen.
Well, and, and the other observation I'm going to make is that with sufficient evergreen screening, the composition of the new building relative to the composition of the existing house isn't going to be anything that anybody's going to see. So, that issue goes away as well.
Well, and I guess also, they're not going to see it because if it is approved, there is going to be the condition that it has to be screened 12 months out of the year with evergreen. So, if something happens to the spruces, they die, you decide to change them, you're going to have to replant something else, and it will have to be at the height of the shed.
If it's not sufficient.
So, you can't get five feet arborvitae and wait for them to grow.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm fully.
From all neighbors too. I mean, that's.
Fully aware of that.
Counselor, do you want to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Okay. I guess, I guess I asked for that one. So, with regard to the appeal at 2515 Crofton Court, I'll start with the permission request first. I'm going to move that the accessory structure be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is not going to hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to the fact that it is going to be fully screened and it is within the setback set by the township ordinances. With regard to the dimensional variance, I move that that also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the fact that this is a corner lot and has two frontages. There is no injustice with adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that it is going to be screened and, and will not be viewed by anybody in the public. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, again, given its location on the corner of Square Lake and Crofton, and this is not self-created due to the reasons stated above. I'm just going to add that all necessary permits should be made within one year and obtained prior to construction. And just to emphasize, although I've said it again, but I need it for the motion, it will have to be screened 12 months out of the year with evergreens that meet or exceed the height of the building.
Steph, does it, is it, is it going to be moved adjacent to the house versus the placement as?
Oh, yes, yes, I, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry.
And I knew that's what you meant.
So, not approved as submitted, but approved as discussed at the meeting, that it's going to go directly behind the garage.
Yes.
Thank you for that.
Do I have a motion in support? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good, eyes happy.
Thank, thank you very much.
All right, next item, 1849 Harvest Lane.
Good evening. My name is April Lang. I'm from Awkwafina Gardens on behalf of the Osmonds at 1849 Harvest Lane, and we are seeking permission to put in a two-foot-high fountain in the front island of the circular And then there's also, we weren't involved in it, but an existing air conditioner that encroaches, and I think there's a diagram that shows, it's probably about three square feet into the natural feature setback because the property is basically an island that's very irregular. So, the water line and natural feature setback line is very irregular, so it's difficult to make a square on that property. So, this is a picture of the fountain, and there should be pictures of the front of the house. So, it's, they exist, the, the island is already in the driveway, the fountain really isn't going to be visible to neighbors, it won't be running in the winter, and it's just going to be a low-flow water dripping off the sides of it, so nothing squirting into the air. It'll be a nice spot for birds and butterflies and bees to come get a drink.
Any questions on the board? All right. Well, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Please come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Shelley Taub, and I live at 1959 Shore Hill Drive. I'm here on behalf of the Sherwood Hills Homeowners Association, and I believe we, we submitted a letter for your packet, Madam Chair, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to reiterate that no application for permission has been submitted to the HOA Architectural Review Committee. So, those are per our bylaws, and so we don't know anything about it, so we can't say yea or nay. It certainly looks lovely, but I just don't know. We, we first usually, and everything else in our subdivision, we approve, you know, changes and what have you, as you well know. And then it comes to you and, but we don't know anything about it. So, thank you for your time. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this item? Please state your name and address, please.
Thanks for the opportunity. I have three questions.
Your name first.
Oh, Paul Young, 1973 Shore Hill Drive. I live right across the small lake from her garage. I tried to submit these questions to the email that's provided in the notice of variance, and it was blocked. Tried it twice yesterday. So, that's just a, to the board, you got to make sure the emails are working, okay?
Yeah, we did have a glitch yesterday, so thank you for mentioning that.
Okay. So, I, I basically have three questions, and maybe they can be answered tonight, but again, the procedure that we really like to go through is when there's a variance like this that affects a subdivision, it does go through the homeowners association as, as Mrs. Taub said, and I think that's highly recommended by the, the board as well. So, my three questions are this. What is the source of water for the fountain? The second question is, is it going to be running 24/7/365? It was already mentioned that it's not going to run during winter, but is it going to be running at nighttime 24/7? We need to know that. And third, we live in a very quiet part of this, part of the neighborhood. The ambient noise level on the dB scale is 35 to 40 dB. That's, that's the way it is. We'd like to know, as, as mentioned in Chapter 14, Article 2 of the ordinances, what the noise level of this fountain is as measured by that particular ordinance. Those are my questions.
Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Anyone else like to speak to this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. The applicant can come back up and address some of the questions and concerns.
So, the source of water would be from the irrigation system. It's just a recirculating fountain. It's not a, a permanent structure that's hooked to plumbing or hooked to the, like that, it constantly refills, so it's a liner system, and you can either fill it up with a hose and then just refill it when it gets low, or you can see in the diagram, it just recirculates. So, so basically, a hose is the, the water. And then in terms of running, typically, this type of fountain is left running 24 hours, but it could be put on a timer so that it wouldn't have to be running 24 hours. They're very gentle sound, much less sound than rain, or I don't know if your lake has a aerator in it, but it'd be much less sound than any sort of like pond aerator that's in a lot of subdivisions. It's a very gentle, soft sound. I don't have any information on the actual decibel level. Some of that depends on the water level in the basin, based on the distance that the water is falling. Because it's so short, it's not particularly loud. He wouldn't, he wouldn't be able to hear it across the street for sure.
Were you aware of the HOA bylaws? I'm just curious that you considered.
I was not, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm ready with the motion if you want.
Oh.
Did you have a question?
No, I don't have questions. I just have a problem with the air conditioning being wetland, but I don't know if you're going to be able to fix that, so by all means.
Well, it's in the natural feature.
My, my issue is that as much as homeowner association comments are something that we consider, I'm also a fan of process. And I'm not certain that process has been followed here. So, I'm going to actually make a motion to table this until the process can be followed.
Support. Support.
So, have motion in support to table?
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Sure. So, support of the motion to table. Faqee?
Yes.
O'Donnell?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Rosati?
No.
Givande?
Yes.
Taylor?
I don't have a choice, I made the motion.
Okay. So, the motion carries six to one.
And is that for both the fountain and the?
Yep.
Okay.
And the irrigation?
To follow the HOA process.
Yeah, we just want, we want you to follow the, homeowners associations don't have the final say, but we do respect their concerns and would like to hear them if there are any. So, be assured, we have approved things that they have not liked, and we have not approved things that they have liked. So, it's just a process.
Can I ask something? This air conditioner has been there since the house is built five years ago, and it was approved, whatever, you know, permit we have to get. So, now you are saying we have to, we have to get approval from the home association?
Yeah, you're going to have to.
For the air conditioner?
Yeah, the fact that it was located on, in a location that was contrary to what was identified with our drawings, let alone seeking a variance from the ZBA, you do have to follow that process with the air conditioning unit.
All right, thank you.
Doesn't mean you can't run it.
Maybe they will have some control.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item.
Madam Chair, as the general, person is coming up to the podium, just to clarify, oftentimes when people are looking at wanting to comment to our, our ZBA public comment at BloomfieldTownship.org, often people are entering .com, and so if they do enter the .com, which is probably more familiar, they're getting error messages. So, we just need to reiterate that if you want to utilize the ZBA public comment access to the township, please remember that we are BloomfieldTownship.org, O-R-G. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Good point.
Yeah, never done this, so. My name's Jason Kelmigan. My wife and I are looking to put a fence in our backyard. I think it's actually technically a front yard, but, yeah, so, pretty, pretty simple. We were going to kind of tie into our neighbor's fence, which we have approval for. We're matching his fence. His doesn't go all the way back to his lot line and Telegraph, so we're just going to tie in same exact company, fence, everything. The back of the fence is going to be going up to Telegraph Road. There's absolutely zero visibility. There's a hill, and then it's heavily treed, and, yeah, you literally can't see a thing back there. So, we're going to wrap the fence around. It's going to be black chain, black, yeah, chain link in the back.
Aluminum. Like that.
And the, the back will be chain link, just because it's going into the wood, it's like going up the property line into the woods, so it's like completely invisible. The sides, both sides, anything visible to neighbors, to any human beings, will be the aluminum. Yeah, the back, we figured, there's already a natural hill back there, but there's nothing stopping my dog from chasing the six deer that come through our backyard on Telegraph every day. So, it's just a little stressful. And there's a pond further north that isn't visible there, that I have a small son and another one on the way that we don't want them to be able to get to the pond. The house, what direction is that? So, northwest. So, the house to the west, they are remodeling, so there's currently, they have no trees or anything down there, but the owner of that house is also the owner of the house next door to them. So, we've talked, and they said, literally said, do whatever you want because we're putting 15-foot trees, we're going to redo this driveway. You know, the house next door to us is getting a complete redo. So, the reason why we're not looking to plant anything right now, like on that, on the north, like above there, you see that driveway? The house that's right there is a dumpster pile, and they're redoing it. And, yeah, so they're going to put big trees up there, and we're not even going to be able to see them in a couple of years, but I have a great relationship with both the neighbors. They let me use their lawn equipment and everything, and they don't care. Yeah, and I, I think we're doing a good job taking into account the front. We're going to do aluminum. Anywhere it's visible, aluminum, black, it'll look clean, and if, I'll be stunned if anybody could ever see the back, the chain link. It'll be.
Okay, just a point of clarification. I think you said you were going to go off of your property into the woods for the back of the fence?
Not off our property.
Okay, because we can't approve a fence on, on your property.
Yeah, no, you guys own that piece. No, 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 no. It's, it's still our, you know, I'm not exactly sure where our line goes, but it's beyond where the tree line starts.
Okay.
From our understanding.
Well, usually, a third event survey.
You said you were tapping into a neighbor's fence as well?
Yeah, so.
Want to use a pointer? Just press that button.
Oh, yeah.
Hold the red button, hold it down.
Handle that. So, they have, this right here is a pool. So, here's where their fence cuts off, like right here, which is the top of my driveway. Maybe it's like right here, actually. And we're just going to pull it up to like there, and then it's going to run, there's these evergreen trees here. We're just going to draw a line right through there. It's going to come up to here, and then we're going to cut it right in the backyard here. There's going to be a gate there, a gate here, and a gate back here, so I can landscape, because the property line goes all the way up to here, and I just want to, I need to be able to get out and landscape it through the back. And, yeah, eventually do a driveway here. But the fence, yeah, it's going to just run off the side of the house in the back here and then cut up like that. If that makes sense.
So, it doesn't really connect to their fence?
No, it does. It's, we're, yeah, it's going to, it's going to tie right into their fence and go back. It's probably 15, 10 feet, 15 feet on that side, because it's already, it's already fenced to here. because it's already fenced to here. So, like, we're just attaching it and going up.
I have a question for you. What is the height?
Four and a half feet on this side, I think. Yeah, it's four and a half feet on this side. And this side, we are trying to save a half inch, and it's four feet over here. And then, the back is also four feet.
Is the four and a half because the neighbor's four and a half?
Yes.
Is it the same material as the neighbor's?
Same exact... Yeah, we... The fence company, like, in fact, they were at it... The fence company came to look out. My neighbor was outside, and he walked over, because he wanted to make sure. He told them personally that... Because he actually wants the fence to go back there, so... He was mad he didn't do it when he initially built out his backyard, so...
Thank you.
Well, I have a question. You're showing at five feet inside your property. Where's his fence? On the line?
It's like right... Yeah, so like, there's... I'd say the trunks of these trees, like, this is a little deceiving. The trunks are probably like here, like halfway between where you see them. So, they're just... His fence is just on like the other side of that. I mean, it's pretty... I mean, we're close neighbors. I mean, we're six feet away from each other.
There's... Both of the originals have the submission that has the red line showing where it's going. There. Further back. Further back.
Sorry.
There you go.
Yeah.
That's what was... Is that what was sent out for...
The notice actually identified at some point 16 feet into the southerly side yard, but actually, it's 11 feet, which was identified in the documentation.
So, if this is going to attach to the neighbor's fence, the neighbor's fence is either on your property, or you're not going to be putting it where that shows, because you're going to be going to the property line on the south side. Because the submission shows it being x number of feet off the southern property line. So, the first observation I'm going to make is that the submit... If this is the submission, what you've been discussing isn't what was submitted. The other observation I'm going to make, and this is unfortunate, because while it sounds like the next-door neighbor's going to solve your screening problem, it's not his to solve. The screening is the burden of the applicant. To keep it from being seen by the neighbors, the next-door neighbor may not mind, but if he...
Nobody lives there.
I understand. But if somebody comes in and decides to cut down whatever trees are there, which they'll have the right to do, then you don't have your fence screened. So, there's two issues here. And I think I might hang my hat on the one that the request versus the submission doesn't seem to be congruent. And so, I'm going to suggest that unless somebody else has an alternative, we may need to table this one as well.
Should we defer and ask our staff? Do you think that we can move forward based on what was submitted?
If it comes up to the property line.
No, we don't have any reference of it being on the property line.
Okay.
This is what was provided.
But if he wants approval today to put it in the five feet and put screening in that area there, that's what's noticed?
Yes.
So, we could approve that, and if you want to do something different...
We can approve... Well, we could approve the back fence, but we can't approve this... We could approve the side fence as submitted, but the side fence...
But approve it as submitted.
But that isn't what is intended.
I understand. So, going back to like the screening thing, so we would have to cover this, so it's not visible?
On the... From neighbors.
Well, that's going to be up to us to decide. But the reality is, the neighbor screening it on your behalf doesn't solve the problem.
The screening problem or the other? This is the problem that you're referencing?
Well, you got two. You got that one. If your neighbor wants the fence to go all the way to the back, like you're planning?
Yeah.
He's not going to be attached to your fence.
Okay.
And my guess is that's not what you want.
Yeah, I don't... I never... I don't know who did this drawing, but yeah, this is just supposed to be right here.
Yeah, okay.
That's...
Well, while we're talking about it, I can edit it right now if you want me to.
This proposal shows...
Has to be noticed that way.
Okay.
And just while you're... If you're redrawing this, you mentioned on the south side that it was kind of going along and back into the house. Right now, it's showing it lining up with the house.
Right, which, either way is fine. I mean, I would just go off the diagram, you know? So, I mean, if they're going to do it that way, that's fine, too. We just need the protection, so...
I understand the need. I'm not questioning the need. I don't think it was noticed as you're requesting it, and as a consequence, I don't know that we can hear it.
Because the notice by law, we have to give people...
Of course, no, I understand.
...some sanity time, so our... I just have one question also, though. With these fences, because it's not a privacy fence, we don't require that they're screened, right, in the township?
Well, anytime that there's a review by the board and it's fences located, you know, within a secondary frontage or that is visible to the public, yes, there's screening that is considered.
Now, black anodized aluminum isn't something that you consider to be offensive.
Right.
We may or may not want it, but we can't...
We can't move ahead anyway. Okay, fine, so...
Say the issue's resolved, because the neighbor's going to take care of it.
Well, if we're doing that, then we don't usually... Maybe I'm going to answer my question. But secondary frontage, I understand that that should be screened. I know we don't screen four foot, but if he's going four and a half, does that make a difference, too?
Well, we'll have to have some clarification of now. He's referencing three gates. That wasn't identified as well. So, by tabling it, we will renotice it, make sure it's accurate, and have an opportunity for the board to consider it.
Madam Chair, I'm going to motion that we table this until proper documentation can be submitted.
Support. I have a motion in support to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
To give him some direction, would we be requiring screening along that south property line?
That's going to be a determination by the board. You're going to have to evaluate what's existing and what could be enhanced or what is actually appropriate for the neighborhood.
Okay. Well, next item. Number three. 3676 Middlebury Lane. Making a B-line up front.
Good evening. Matt Mosier, representing the homeowners at 3676 Middlebury Lane. This is a nice backyard project to improve their existing spaces that they have. They're going to be removing an existing deck and doing some new patio spaces. We're in front of you guys tonight, because on the north side, which is the far side of the patio, there is an eight-foot-tall fire and TV wall that will look a little bit like that. And then, we also have just a casual gas fire pit area outside of that. Both of these require your blessing. And as you can see, we've got plenty of evergreen screening. We've been working closely with the association all the way up until today. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do I need to accuse myself if this is in my subdivision? Have we approved this? My wife would want one.
It's nice.
You could stay in my place.
All right, any questions, other questions? All right. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this item? Please state your name and address, please.
My name's Tom Callreider. I'm here on the behalf of the Westchester Village Homeowners Association on the Architectural Control Committee. So, we review projects like these for our neighborhood. Full disclosure, Giandera Hack are my neighbors. So, we've been in communication with them and the designer for about a month now. At this point, we have not internally approved this project at the HOA, because we had requested information on drainage for the project. Over the last two to three years, due to the increasing precipitation we've been seeing, we have adopted essentially drainage reviews that are almost exactly the same as the township ordinances, to my understanding. We did receive those late yesterday, but we have not had a chance to approve them. So, at this point, we have not approved the application to begin with. And I may be going out on a limb, but I'm assuming that since we just got them about 4:30 yesterday, I'm guessing Bloomfield Township has not seen them either. So, we have a little bit of concern about that. We've had a lot of drainage problems in the subdivision, and particularly, there's two yards behind this home. They get some... Quite a bit of ponding when we get significant rains, which, in that definition, is, I think everyone can agree, has changed over the last few years. So, you know, this is kind of an existing problem. We just want to make sure that it's not going to be exacerbated. So, we requested the drainage calculations. We just got them. We plan to review them. I want to point out that both the homeowner and the design team have been very responsive. We've had a lot of back and forth. We've asked a lot of questions. They've made some changes, specifically, the fire pit was moved over further away from the property line, because that was a concern to some of the neighbors. This is more of an editorial comment. The eight-foot firewall is something that in the past we would have considered to be a fence, but I see that Bloomfield Township has not interpreted it that way, and I can see that argument, so we do not have plans to protest that. So, I think the last thing that I would say is we're in pretty good agreement with the entire project. I have talked with... This is Matt, right? Oh, sorry, I'm not supposed to address the audience. With Matt, and he has assured me that we will work this out and make sure that things are okay with the drainage. So, at this point, all I can say is we have not approved it, and we have concerns about drainage. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
If there's any questions?
Actually, I mean, I'm just curious if you think that this project is going to impact the drainage? Like, is it taking away, you know, grass and now replacing it with something impermeable? I'm just wondering, like, is your decision going to be... Is the drainage going to affect your decision on this?
Yes, yes. It's a little hard to tell from that drawing, but basically, in the area of the yellow rectangle, there's a fairly significant patio right there, which is impermeable surface. That's how we do part of our analysis. The fire pit is, I think that's all gravel.
And that'll all be new, newly impermeable?
That would all be new, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And so, we just got...
Understood. Yeah, no, I was just curious about that, but I completely understand.
Yeah, so, we recently added, you know, part of our review. Actually, this was five, six years ago, for impermeable surfaces for a similar reason, among other things.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. You wanted to address anything?
As Tom said, he's actually been really great to work with as well. Listen, on every project, and I'm here, fortunately... I'll say fortunately, every month in front of you guys. And I don't think I have a scar on my name yet, so not planning on starting here. We were notified, I don't know, a week and a half ago, that they'd like a full drainage calculation. So, as some of you on the board know, getting a civil engineer to do that in short order is tough. I took probably a six-week process down to about four days by begging and pleading and got it to these guys to prove that there's no issue. Being in the business for a long time, we're not even changing anything around the property lines. We're adding a patio, just like everybody else has. Completely respect the concerns, and that's why the second they asked, I didn't even push back. I said, "No problem, we'll get the engineer to do it." So, we did that. You guys know when we submit for permits or the contractor does, that'll be submitted with the permit application. The township's office will review that and ensure that the drainage is adequate for that lot. So, I think we've addressed that on our end, and I did everything I could to make it happen for these guys.
Other questions?
I have a question. Patty, in reading the request, it's talking about an outdoor feature wall and gas fire pit. It is not the issue of the patio. Now, unless I can figure out how a wall and gas fire pit, which are sitting on a patio that does not require approval, is going to impact drainage, as much as I would perhaps like, out of curiosity, to see how it comes out, I'm not sure it's relevant. And I'm also reluctant to add one more to a list of two that have already been postponed until the next meeting.
It's not our job to determine drainage matters.
I also think the township is going to be looking at that. So, as much as the association has the right to ask, in my opinion, in looking at this, it's irrelevant, because the chimney isn't going to...
For that reason.
I get to make a motion.
I will make a motion.
Oh, you get to make a motion.
Just so you'll stop talking.
Yes, ma'am.
In regard to the permission request at 3676 Middlebury Lane, I move to approve the proposed outdoor feature wall and gas fire pit as the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The two proposed features are compatible with adjoining properties appropriate for the neighborhood and will not hinder or discourage the properties in the area. If approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
And I will tell the association, he does great work, so you should not be concerned.
All right, item number four. 2867 Corville Drive. Is the applicant here?
Can I make a motion to move it to the end of the meeting?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I should say? Well, we'll move it to the back. All right, then, we're going to move to item number five. We'll move four to the end. 2840 Turtle Grove Court. Can you state your name and address, please?
My name is Chris Zirps with Motor City Landscaping. We're at 301 Hacker in Rochester Hills. And we designed this hot tub area for homeowners here. So, basically, it's a prefab hot tub unit, like you'd see, you know, all over. And we're proposing a automatic cover that's like a cabana structure over the top of it that's motorized, that the roof drops down to cover the spot when it's not in use. And as an additional backup safety feature, we have a four-foot black aluminum pool code fence surrounding it. And then, we're also proposing to extend the asphalt driveway and put in a basketball hoop on the side of the property that will be screened with arborvitae's.
It's so tall. Does that unit come any shorter?
When it's open, 115 inches tall.
Well, its notice is 10 feet high.
Maximum overall, per this drawing here, 115 inches.
It's still under the 14-foot requirement. Technology.
I guess. So, it comes down and totally encloses the hot tub? Is that the situation?
So, the roof comes down and sits right on top of the hot tub, so you can't get in it?
Yeah.
Let me ask a question. When the roof comes down, do the posts to which it's attached remain? Or do the posts themselves elevate to lift the roof?
Like telescope?
Yeah.
I am not sure.
Well, I'm just curious, because that would mean that it's permanently 10 feet up.
Yeah.
I'm not sure it matters. I'm just curious.
Any other questions from the board? Any other questions from the board? All right, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here like to speak to this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Bring it back to the board for any other questions or discussion, or give them a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll take this one. With regard to the permission request at 2840 Turtle Grove Court, for the accessory structure, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards, because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood. Also, the location of it does not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to the fact that it is going to be screened. With the dimensional variance required for the spa, spa cover, fence located at the West Clear Lake Road, and secondary frontage, a sports court located in the side yard, I did notice that the association has approved it, and so, I'm relying on the fact that they've reviewed it in further, in, in, you know, great detail. So, with regard to the dimensional variance at this address, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the, the lot and the topography. Further, there is no injustice to adjoining neighbors for a reason that it would be screened appropriately. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated with the existing floor plan and the limitations the house currently has in the topography, and it's not self-created due to the way that the house is placed on the lot. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. I am going to say that additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the swim spa from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the spa at the time of planting. Use of the sports, sports court is limited to daylight hours, and no illumination is permitted for the sports court.
Support.
I have a motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next item, number six, 1020 Green Tree Road.
They have to screen it, okay?
Good evening, board members.
Good evening. Aye.
I'm Mike Wozniak. I'm a contractor, and typically, I don't live in this, in the township, but I do business in all of southeast Michigan. I work with high-end landscapers, like some of these gentlemen who've come up here today, and this is a typical job. We would, we have put a beautiful metal motorized pergola into, and it meets all the requirements of the standards and so forth. I'd rather have been here before we did this. I had, what simply happened was, I thought that the general contractor covered this, which is usually what happens. I give them all the data, and it becomes part of that whole project, which was obviously quite involved. One little correction that will, will help your perspective, I'm not sure how 12-foot tall got on our verbiage, but it's about 10-foot four off the grade. And there should be some pictures that I took, you know, from inside the pergola, looking different directions, and it's really quite, you know, secluded. You'd have to come drive, get out of your car and walk to the back and see it from the front, and there's lots of vegetation, permanent, you know, four-season vegetation all, all around the yard. So, I just have to owe myself at the mercy of the, the board and ask that you approve what, what's been done.
I want to ask you about the vegetation.
Yes.
If we go back to the plan, back one. All those trees that you're showing, those large trees, are they on the property, or are you proposing to plant those?
Those are on the neighbor's trees, as I recall.
Okay, so you are not proposing any screening on your own property? Or on their property, not yours?
I'm, I'm not the landscaper, so I hate to talk, to speak for him.
Okay.
I don't think he's added anything on there, except for, you know, small, low plantings.
Yeah, because there has been an indication that a lot of that plantings around the property are in very bad shape and may not be there that long, so, you know, we have to consider the screening of the structure.
There, that's what, that's what you're asking about this right here.
Yeah.
They've been there a long time, they're large, they're, they certainly block the view, you really can't see the houses.
Yeah, except the homeowner is, wrote a letter saying that they're diseased, and they've tried to treat them, and they're going to have to have them removed. And whether or not they were going to have them removed, you may have heard with an earlier applicant, that the screening has to be on your property. So, even if they were going to keep those blue spruces there, we would still have the requirement that you would have to have screening on your property, because that other property owner can take those trees down any day, and you would still have to have your accessory structure shielded.
I understand. I would say half, at least half of it is on their property, just from my being on the site and looking around.
I mean, we have a homeowner letter saying that those trees are on that homeowner's property, and I think you first.
No, I, I don't, I believe that.
Yeah, and you, and you indicated that they are on the neighbor's property, so.
Right, I'm, I'm not the, I'm not the tree guy, I'm just, I'm the pergola guy.
Yeah.
Can't solve all the issues.
Well, you're going to have to go back and tell the tree guy he has to plant some trees.
Okay, I get to give them the, the good news, okay. I understand.
Yeah, you got what you wanted, now he's.
Now you make it work.
But it's, you know, very beautiful, and they can, they can enjoy it.
I, I'm, or do we do the?
We haven't done the.
We have to do public comment, yeah, yeah.
Let's go.
All right, well, I'm going to open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Okay?
I really didn't want to talk, but my letter was okay, but I'll clarify.
Wait, we did read all the letters, so.
Yeah, we do have the letters. We read them all. Do you have, want anything else you want to add?
3340 Sunny Hill Court. We are the property behind it, and the one picture that he did show is kind of pointing upward. If we can go that one. As you see, it's kind of pointing upward.
Are you referring to this?
The top of the trees looked the best.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we saw it.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. And we just want to be afforded the same privacy as everybody else, because they put it on the front, the sides, and part of the back. So, we'd just like to be treated like everybody else. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this item? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing. I know you're not the landscaper guy, so you can't really address that, but you're going to be the messenger, so, I'll bring it back to the board. Are there any questions or discussion or motion?
My only question would be, Patty, could we put a contingency on when the trees would have to be planted? I mean, now we're like coming up ripe for planting season.
Well, and, and do we want them planted before the other ones are taken down?
Yes, I think so.
Because I'm not certain that.
Oh, that they'll survive.
I'm not certain what will happen when those come down.
Oh, gosh.
So, there's a lot of ifs to this.
Yeah.
And so, I think, based on the fact that, you know, this is existing, we typically want to make sure that permits are applied for on a timely basis. I think there should be some sort of a timeframe for planting, and what type of species that may be planted. We also don't know what the conditions are, and it might mean the placement of these evergreen screening might not be necessarily as adjacent to that fence line as maybe. It might be more inward to their property, but that would be the consequences, if you will, of the circumstances leading to this approval.
And, and I'm, I'm a little bit more ambivalent on the need for screening on pergolas, which tend to be an architectural feature and attractive from the road versus needing to be screened from the road. So, I'll, I'll leave that up to, to the group. I would, I would, I'm going to make, I'm going to make a basic permission request motion, and I'll let you guys decide how you want to amend it from there. So, with that having been said, Madam Chair, with regard to the permission request at 1020 Green Tree, I'm going to move that the permission request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all of the compliant, all that, has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards, because the use of the accessory structure is not going to hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property. Even if seen visually, it is unlikely to be considered a detriment, and because of that, I am not going to request additional evergreen screening. You're welcome to amend this after I finish, if you wish. But application for all necessary permits must be made within five days, because this is an existing pergola. And as I've noted, I've, I've eliminated the need for screening. I'll let you guys decide.
I'm in favor of screening.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do a motion, and then we can amend the motion, then we can amend the motion.
I am too. It's a, it's a use.
Need a second before you can.
Need a second first, yeah, okay.
Oh, well, we're evaluating use as well as a structure, you know, accessory use, and I'm, I'm hearing from the neighbors that they just don't have enough privacy back there. So, I would require the screening, you know, it's probably not an issue from the road, it's more from the back neighbor, and if they could come up with a plan, probably is closer to the pergola, but there's paving around there, so, then it needs to screen that from, it looks like at least two sides for the use.
Am I allowed to amend, am I allowed to amend my?
12 months out of the year.
And that it should be maintained?
Okay, so I'm going to make, I'm going to amend my own motion. It'll require a second, of course, but I'm going to amend my motion to include evergreen screening equal to the height of the existing structure. 12 months out of the year. I mean, that's what evergreen screening is, so I don't know what else I need to do.
All right, I'll support again.
I think we got support again for the amended motion.
I don't know if we just add a contingency, if we can, that they have to be planted within 90 days?
I'd even, I'd even go by.
60 days.
Spring of next year.
Spring of next year, that's too long. It's fall, the perfect time to plant the trees in the fall.
But trees have to be taken down, and then.
August.
Well, no, because they can, they can, they have to move it in. I mean, that neighbor doesn't have to take those trees down.
That's fine, they can put them up by the pergola, as close to the patio as they want.
Which is probably what they're going to have to do, but.
All right. So, are we going to add that to the?
That's, that's all part of it.
What's the timeframe, please?
I think the, the way things go, maybe.
90 days.
120?
Or 120?
I'm in favor of 90.
By the end of November.
Yeah, okay, fine.
End of November.
By this, end of this year.
September, October.
Well, you're not going to plant them in December anyway.
But you're not going to plant in November.
No, the best time to plant is basically now through October.
You can't plant them in December, but you can plant them in November.
Yeah, okay.
You don't have frost in the ground yet.
Okay, so, or more, or you could say this season, potentially, whatever. But, yeah, this is.
I think a specific timeframe makes it easier for the, for the, for the planning department.
So, is it?
I've heard 90 days, I heard 120 days.
Okay, 120.
120 days.
All right.
Second.
Okay, so we, okay. All right, so we'll make sure that we, everyone understands. Okay, so we have a motion in support. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right.
All right, thank you. All right, item number seven.
Good evening. I'm Robert Cuthbertson from 1037 Clearpoint Court. I'm here today to ask for eight-foot encroachment on the 35-foot setback. Currently, the back of this house, which faces west, has a temporary structure. It has a slab of cement that actually goes well beyond the request of this eight feet. That slab has been there since the home was built. I am only asking to remove the temporary structure, and I brought Tom, who's the builder and representative for the company that's going to be doing the work here. I want to put a four-seasons greenhouse room on the back of my home. That's what I'd like to do. Excuse me.
Goodness.
Well, my husband died five months ago, so, he and I were going to be here tonight to do this, so, I just, I do apologize. The cement is going to remain. I can remove the temporary fence that's there. There are some plantings, they're minuscule, if we need to do anything, but that's what I'm asking for. The homeowners association, you have the letter, I believe, from them? They were all in favor. My neighbors are all in favor. I've spoken with all of them. They are all in agreement. Only one can see this structure, and that's the gentleman directly west of me. He can see it from two small windows and his driveway. No one else will be able to see the structure.
Okay, all right. If there are no questions, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item?
Hi, good evening. My name is Ray Nasser. I live at 1041 Clearpoint Court. I am the architectural representative on the BNE Homeowners Association, and at the June 12th board meeting, we did review the plans for the proposed addition and approved them, providing they're in compliance with township requirements, so I just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this item? Then I'll close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
In regard to the appeal at 1037 Clearpoint Court, for a dimensional variance, I move the variance be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty, because strict compliance with the letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the unique shape of the lot, the location on the lot so close to the rear yard, and the eight-foot, or the existing slab that's already there would, there'd be no injustice to adjoining neighbors, being that they're used to the, the situation that's there now. And again, it's not self-created due to the, really, the unique shape of the lot. Should this motion be approved, all necessary permits must be applied for within one year, and all permits must be received before starting construction.
Support.
I have a motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it? Congratulations. I'm so sorry for your loss.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, number eight, I believe. Is anyone here? Okay, we have 3749 Darlington Road.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Hart. I'm the architect for Julie and Mark Pulte. The case you had before me this evening is an accessory structure that was originally approved back in October of 2021. It was originally lined up in the center of the house, and it had a pergola structure over the top of it to provide shade and screening. Since the house was constructed, a new landscape plan was submitted, and it was decided that that hot tub feature would be shifted 23 feet to the east. It's still within the side yard setback requirement, and the, there's a substantial amount of screening and rock formations that are, that are planned along the east and the south side facing Oakland Hills Golf Course. It will be virtually impossible to see it from any of the neighboring properties. You might be able to see some of it from the golf course, but there's, it's probably close to 70 feet to the nearest structure to the, what, to the east, and probably close to 160 feet from the nearest structure to the west. There are existing trees on the southwest, excuse me, the southeast corner of the structure of the property, and there are, they're planning to add several trees. The structure that was originally proposed had a 10-foot-high pergola with open-to-the-sky joists. Now, there's nothing like that proposed. Now, the, the deck that they're proposing is roughly 18 by 18, and it's open to the sky, so that's actually a much less obtrusive structure. And because of the shift of the, of the unit to the east, it was decided that we should come before the board to relook at this particular case, so that's why I'm here tonight. before the board to relook at this particular case, so that's why I'm here tonight.
Any questions from the board? Right, then I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? And I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion if there's no discussion.
Go ahead.
Okay. So with regard to the permission request for the hot tub at 3749 Darlington Road, I move that the request be, for this structure be approved as submitted, based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood, as well as the location of it will not hinder nor discourage the adjacent use of property due to its location. Then, secondly, with the dimensional variance required for the deck encroaching 16 feet into the required 35-foot rear yard requirement, I also move that this dimensional variance be approved as requested, and based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for the practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the size of a lot. Further, there is no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason that it is screened and virtually impossible to see. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the, you know, the existing floor plan of the house, as well as, you know, it backing up to Oakland Hills North, and it's not created for the same reasons. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits to be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it?
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. All right, next item, number nine, 1883 Spring Grove Road.
Logan Butler for 1883 Spring Grove. I apologize, I've been up since 3:00 AM, so I stutter. Skew, just redirect me. My wife and I are looking to build a fence particularly for our dogs, which is why I'm here before you this evening. We looked up all of the criteria online, four-foot fence, 16 feet away from the side lots, 25 feet away from the back lot. We've worked with a professional fencing company that has helped us with this design. We're actually copying a fence that was put in on 1847 Spring Grove that you have already approved. We've spoken to those homeowners who have been through this process. Oh, no, my colors didn't go through. Ah, all that work.
Want to come back?
I know.
It's really in color. You just can't see because you're tired.
So sad. But I was given the forewarning, I think is the appropriate word, of providing some screening on the south side, which is the right side of the screen, with evergreen trees, as you can see. The left side, there's only approximately 15 meters between our house and the next house, which you would not be able to see much from the front. The back is covered in trees, except for a slight area that has pre-existing trees that I don't think we could plant anything in that would survive. I can't think of anything else to say, other than we've spoken to our neighbors, who, if I've learned anything from this meeting, is why I really need to make sure I don't make my neighbors angry. And the president of our HOA lives right behind us, is a wonderful lady, and has already given us verbal approval of this. I think that's all. Oh, and pictures of my house, and my dogs, and my wife. Oh, and my crazy side lot. Is it shaped like that? I think that's all I have to say.
Any questions from the board?
What are the plantings that you were referring to?
They are, I believe I have them noted there. They're like giant green arborvitae. They're the big ones because they look great.
Currently there?
They're not currently there because I have to figure out where the fence is going to go, and I don't know specifically where they're going to be planted yet, but that's the design.
The design is to screen the fence.
Yes, ma'am. From the only side where you drive into the neighborhood that you could even see the fence, really.
And they'll be planted on the outer part?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a...
I haven't done that.
No, I'm sorry.
I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item?
I haven't been here that long. I can't have made any enemies.
All right, well, then I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
I'd like to make a motion. In regard to the appeal at 1883 Spring Grove Road, for the dog containment fence, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information provided, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the height of the dog fence meets our ordinance, the use is appropriate to the neighborhood, and the location is acceptable for their dog containment. It should be harmonious with the neighborhood and not hinder any neighbor-adjacent property. Should this motion, oh, and you will require, will be required to screen it on that north property line on the outer side of the fence. Should this motion be approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
Okay, I have motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Young man.
All right, next item, 5054 Sebring Court.
Good evening. We are Kelly and Gerhard Schroeder at 5054 Sebring Court. Our proposed structure is a 12 by 16 by approximately 11-foot-high shed. We would install it on a new concrete pad in our rear yard, at least 16 feet from our next-door neighbor. The purpose of the shed would be to store all of our garden equipment. We even mow our own lawn still, so I'm sure our neighbor would love for us to get that out of our yard. Currently, we store all that equipment in our two-car garage. The shed would be up at the top, past the cars where you see in the driveway, in the rear yard, a little bit visible from the road, so we would plant arborvitae once it's installed. And on the right, the lower photo shows the right side of our neighbors, our next-door neighbor, that property, and that's the vegetation that would be behind the shed. Are there any questions?
And we have spoken to our neighbors to the shed side and had a public...
Yeah, I just have a quick question. So does the driveway extend to it, or it's freestanding with the arb's and the cute little door?
It would not extend to it. No, see the, where we've got the diagram of the arborvitae, that sets it back enough to be into our rear yard.
And screen.
So we wouldn't have any access to it.
Thanks.
Is the vegetation on your neighbor's side sufficient 12 months out of the year?
It is, it goes up a slope that 16, at least 16 feet that we're showing, goes up a slope, and it is fairly heavily vegetated behind the shed, and they have a fence.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then I'll open the public hearing. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Steve Belania. I live at 5096 Sebring Court. We don't have a homeowners association, but I'm here to support the variance so that they get their shed. They have 2.3 acres of property, but most of it is wetlands, and God bless them, they keep it wetlands with wildlife and all that, so they really can only put it on top of the hill. Based on the fact that the door is not going to be big enough to put a car in, and based on the arborvitae planning, so you won't be able to see it from the street, I'm here to support the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this item? Then I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, may I make a motion?
Sure.
With regard to the permission request at 5054 Sebring Court, I move that the appeal be, for the accessory structure, be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the location of the accessory structure will not hinder nor discourage the adjacent use of property. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within a year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. And additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the shed from public view, and must meet or exceed the height of the shed at the time of planting, although on their drawing there, the ones that they've called out look sufficient.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thanks.
Good evening. All right, item number 11, 125 Self Cranbrook Cross Drive. Hello?
Hello, I'm Randy Hike with Action Fence. We're looking at placing a fence that is already existing. My customer bought the house. As you see, that's double frontage, maple being the secondary frontage, and a little bit of six-foot privacy fence that's there, does provide adequate privacy and screening from Maple Road, and it does give him the feeling of security for his children so they're not wandering into the street. The fence on the east side of the property does block out. If you've driven by, the house next door is very rundown, the yard is very dilapidated. There is a fence there currently, we're going to be taking out to replace because it is falling over. And then the fence on the lower part, on the southern edge, will be just a four-foot-tall solid fence, just to keep his kids in, but also to follow letter of the code.
Any questions from the board?
What's the purpose for the six feet?
It's visual from the, from maple, so the privacy, because maple is literally...
That house right there.
Right, and then that's the other part of the problem, that the house behind is so close, and literally, nothing's been done to it. It's very rundown.
Is the fence going to be on the property line?
Correct, yes.
Is that the rear of that neighbor house, or a side?
Side.
The fact that this is on the property, well, if you move it in, then you destroy the gardens that are there.
No yard left.
There's no, if it's on the property line, you can't screen it. And if you could screen it, you wouldn't need the six feet.
Right.
The backyard is very narrow, too. Bringing it in, it...
Yeah, I can, yeah, I can see that. Yeah, they're eating up all the dirt.
And there's a fence already there?
Correct, there is a current fence there that is...
Replacement?
When they moved in, that was there already, so...
I understand.
So that's the one that's being replaced?
So you're replacing that?
Yes. Okay. There's a chain-link fence on the east side that we're going to be removing as well, so that we can get all the vegetation that's overgrown in between the two fences.
Yeah, I thought it looked like there were literally two fences.
There is two fences there, yes.
What would the finish be on the fence? You're showing bare wood here.
It'll look just like that, which will, you know, they're stained, they can do whatever, but the finished side will face the neighbor, correct? The nice side will face the neighbor, face maple as well.
Do we have feedback from the neighbor?
There is some.
Yes. Are there several in favor?
There are several letters received in your packet for approval, as well as the association.
Okay. All right. No further questions, discussion, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone here like to speak to this item? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, with regard to the request for dimensional variance at 125 Cranbrook Cross, I'm going to move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, and in fact, would not render the relief that's being requested, the privacy, the replacement of an existing fence, et cetera. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the placement of the fence or its utility. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, considering the adjacent property, the condition of the existing fence, the fact that there's two fences, et cetera, all need to be remedied, and certainly, these are not self-created, and thanks to the new owner. With that having been said, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the fence and prior to installation. I don't see how additional evergreen screening can be required.
Support.
I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Thank you, have a good night. All right, moving right along. Number 12, 6846 Crestway Drive.
Mr. Feldman has a fence currently. This was all pre-approved when the original pool went in. I spoke with Chris Fox, the building department, trying to argue for the fact that there is an existing fence. All we're looking to do is replace it as it is, because it's falling apart, and he said that it is non-conforming because it's a double frontage, so we have to come here. So it's a pool, he needs a fence.
So what type of fence? The aluminum?
Aluminum, and there's a wood privacy fence on the west side of the lot, I believe, because the neighbor that's downhill looks right at it.
Got it, okay. With the finished side facing out?
It currently does face in, but the new will face out, correct?
Thank you.
And it's four feet, I heard.
It's four feet, correct. The existing fence is five feet, but we're going to shorten that to four feet. Nice straight line all the way across. On the left side there, you'll see there's a, like a pool house, and there's an elevated change in grade right there, but to keep it looking nice and straight, we're just going to keep it four feet on top of that wall, and just use longer posts. So it will be a little bit taller right there, but only because to keep a nice straight line, like if you're looking at it, it's going to look funny to just go, to fall off the hill.
Screening.
But when you're standing inside, it'll only be four feet tall.
It's going to be white, or it's going to be just like the one there?
I don't know if he has a plan to paint it or stain it. It's going to be a regular, I mean, it's painted a color now, so I imagine he's going, they're going to match the same color.
Okay.
Which is the color of the house and the cabin.
Any other questions?
Do we talk about screening?
Seems to me, since we're...
Replacing an existing?
Replacing an existing, but... It's flat in the back, but...
Well, we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board if you have any other discussion or questions or motion.
I'd be willing to make a motion.
Sure.
Okay. In regard to the appeal at 6846 Crestway Drive, for the four-foot fence around the pool, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with the Section 42-7.6 standards because the accessory structure would be harmonious to the neighborhood given the fact that it's replacing an existing fence that's already been in place and has been supported by the neighbors. If this application is, if this motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and prior to installation, and at this point, I don't see a need for any additional evergreen plantings.
Support.
I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It does, I just want to clarify, that's a dimensional variance approval, correct?
A lot of different variations from the class.
Okay.
Oh, duh.
So if we add a couple extra reasons, maybe that'll...
Okay, yes.
Sorry about that.
Yep, I'm sorry.
Good catch, thank you.
Thank you, I didn't catch it either.
Okay.
And also, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome
because it would put the residents at risk due to the fact that they would be without a fence to protect the pool area. And there is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by the reason of the fact that a fence already exists. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the fact that the pool is there, the fence is there and needs to be replaced, and it's not self-created. pool is there, the fence is there and needs to be replaced, and it's not self-created since they bought the property with the existing fence in place.
Perfect.
Still support.
Is there a second?
Yep, support.
Okay, I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There you go.
Great, thank you.
All right, next item. Number 13, 3678 South...
I want you to stay and help me.
It's one of the best, one of the best.
Patty Galls, Showalter, 3678 South Boulevard. This is my husband, Mike Showalter. And we are looking to replace, we are right on South Boulevard. And out front, we have a six-foot fence right now, wood, it's dilapidated, falling down. We would, that's what we'd like to put up. We have approval from all the neighbors, we have approval from the subdivision, and the neighbor to that side, what side is that?
East.
East. His, he has a six-foot fence and it's leaning up against our cyclone fence. So we would be taking that down and putting up the new fence on both sides going back and leaving the backyard fence there, which the neighbor has a six-foot fence. And then we have a four-foot fence, so we'd have two fences that we already have that are there, existing. How'd I do? Okay.
The fence is facing South Boulevard, it's really dilapidated and it's the last piece of the puzzle in renewing the home.
And the pool is, from 1958, as well as the house, and the pool is just over nine feet deep. So it's nerve-wracking to think a four-foot fence could, I would be sick if something happened.
The cyclone fence has had trees fallen on it.
And it's kind of bent.
Rusty.
Can I...
Really needs replacing.
Can I, one of the, one of the things that's nice about the current wood fence is that it has a tendency to be a somewhat muted color and blends in. The white is going to be quite noticeable, I'm...
About that, all the features on the house are white. The shutters, all the accents, the gutters.
We just painted it all.
Yeah, we just painted everything.
We're going to put boxwood along the white fence, we thought that would be real pretty.
From the inside?
No, the outside would have the boxwood.
No, I'm just saying, from the inside, it would be very pretty. I, again, the stark white in replacement of the muted wood color is what's raising my...
Have you seen the house?
I understand the house, it's driving by and seeing the fence. I've seen the house, it's not the issue, it's driving by and seeing an extensive fencing that's all white and six feet high.
Only about 30 feet along the South Boulevard.
I understand. That's my observation.
I appreciate that.
And I would point out, I know that that has sometimes been an issue in the past, but to the extent that the homeowners association approved the color, it's obviously acceptable to the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think it looks good.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Then I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
With respect to the property at 3678 South Boulevard, I would move to approve the dimensional variance for the proposed six-foot fence because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because they're replacing what is an existing fence that is dilapidated. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. All the neighbors have in fact approved the fence, as well as the homeowners association. There are unique circumstances to the property, being the existence of the very deep pool and the fact that the fence has been in place for many, many years, and it's not self-created. Application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and prior to installation. And I don't think I'm going to require any additional plantings on this fence.
Support. Do I have a motion in support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If it passes.
You did well.
You did fine.
Honest, we try not to be that painful.
All right, next item. Number 14, 1500 West Long Lake Road.
Good evening, my name is Ryan Youngblood, I'm with our Youngblood Company, 512 Madison Avenue Rochester, representing our client Omar Akani with the request to include in a project we're working on with him right now, to install entry columns at the new driveway that we've installed. You can see up there where we got the columns and a gate called out, and so I'm requesting the columns, which will hold the entry gate, automatic gate, to increase the security for the property.
Why so tall?
Why so tall? Well, we're trying to get the designers live and sleep and live on proportions, right? So we're trying to get proportions, right? So we want to try to get the, if you drive by the property, the driveway is actually going up a slope, so you're in a lower elevation from the driveway. So trying to get the tall, the fence, the gate itself as tall as we can at the column connections, and so trying to work out in proportion with that for the column itself.
But the question becomes why?
Why?
What's the practical difficulty that necessitates this, other than architectural aesthetics?
There's, there is nothing, it's just, it's all set.
Right, I mean, we, we have, we try to keep these down as low as we can.
So I guess our, there would be a slight hardship would be the view of elevation.
Is the client willing to go lower?
Are you willing to go lower? Or higher?
I'm not going.
We're not going higher, and I'm not going eight feet.
The question tonight, the question tonight is, can we do what we're proposing? That's sort of the question, then waiting to hear what you guys had to say.
Well, let me ask another question. Where's the illumination? Because in addition to being lord knows how tall, they are illuminated, so where's the illumination?
So our plan is to do all landscape lighting.
Okay.
So I'm, I do not like coach lamps, because what happens is our human eyes actually adjust to that bright light, and then you can become the safety hazard. So we actually like to illuminate all in a very even lighting pattern.
To be uplit from...
Yes, yes.
You got two issues. In order to have a seven-foot gate, you got to have eight-foot pillars, so...
That's our, that's our concern.
My observation would be we want to, if we had a four-foot gate, I might be able to live with five-foot pillars.
I'm thinking the same thing, Bob.
Oh, no. Heaven for fence.
So it doesn't educate me on that, you know, because we kind of came with a fallback plan of if the seven-foot eight wasn't approved, that we know that we have six-foot gates throughout the community, I'm sorry, six-foot columns throughout the community. That would be our second request, would be to lower the gate, the columns from a seven-foot eight to a six-foot column.
How close are these to the road?
So they're at the, they're at the setback. Site plan was submitted, there you go, there's some photos right there.
They're going to be highly visible.
But is there a site plan drawing? Oh, there it is.
The other, the other, so if I'm, if I'm, if I'm remembering this property correctly, although it says, go back to that, no, go back to the overlay, the one that shows the road. If I'm remembering this correctly, although it's a 1500 West Long Lake Road, that, that big line down at the bottom is actually West Long Lake Road. This is, this is, this is something that cuts back and provides access for the 1234567 homes that are on it that, that provide relatively secluded access. I'm struggling with the notion for the need, period, because it's already off of Long Lake Road. If I'm driving down Long Lake Road, unless I want to take a detour and take that, that side that accesses those five driveways, I don't know that house is there. So I'm struggling to understand the need, period, let alone the need for something that tall. I don't see it being a security issue, I don't see it being a privacy issue, because the only people that even know that house is back there are the 123456 neighbors that live there.
So are you aware of the new driveway that we put in this summer?
All the way out to Long Lake Road?
All the way to Long Lake Road.
I was not.
Private, approved, and completed.
Okay, my apologies.
What's happened, what's happened since the driveway, it's in the photo that was submitted with the package, what's happened right there is that because of the new driveway, curiosity has elevated substantially. So people are actually entering the new driveway and just pulling back in there, hence the reason we're here today.
Okay, so gates, I understand. I'm still struggling with the height.
Yeah, and we're working up proportions. We're going to have a scale, though, the home was a very large, beautiful historical estate with a lot of amazing history to it, and we're just trying to, as designers, work with the proportion and scale of what you see at that home. So when you pull through these gates, these columns, everything, design continuity is very strong and thought about.
And we understand that, and that's been the same argument that others have made about the proportion, but like I said, we try to keep them as low as we can.
Right, and so I'm requesting an amended, we came at seven-foot eight, and I'm requesting, I actually have it drawn, I could show right here, where proportions come down to a six-foot tall column and then across with a, you know, proportion of the gate.
So you can't even see the house from where this gate will be, so you're not seeing the relationship or whatever.
But it's about the, it's about the experience when you enter the property.
Yeah.
But to your point, no, you cannot see the connection.
And the difficulty is, is that one of the things we have to state is that this is not self-created, and I'm struggling to figure out how to solve that problem.
That was, that's not, what did you say that again?
I'm trying, one of the issues we have to address if we approve something, and we have to address four different, four very specific issues, and one of them, the last one, is not self-created. I'm struggling to figure out how to answer that on your behalf.
The property, to your point, prior to the driveway going in, had, has an easement drive that takes you back to about five homes. When the client said, since they bought the home, renovated the home, again, because there's an easement drive that's servicing five homes, there's an excessive amount of people that are driving back there and becoming an issue with that. So that's what drew the main point, putting the private drive in themselves, right? So that was, that was a hardship right there, to put the drive, and that's why the driveway was approved because of the hardship.
I understand.
Okay, so that's clear. And then now the hardship right now is because of the driveway, to your point, but was based off of a hardship, we now have a hardship with people entering that piece of property.
And be assured, a four-foot gate is going to stop people from doing that.
It will. Again, I think what I'm asking, we're going back and forth here, I asked for a seven-foot eight gate, I'm asking for a six-foot column. That's, that's, that's what we're, what we're trying to talk through right now.
So you understand.
It's balance proportions.
And you've got two out of seven votes that are already wondering why you need more than four.
Aesthetics, proportion.
As it relates to practice, as it relates to not being self-created, the need for the fence exists.
You need some illumination, maybe for some safety, security.
If you, if you had evidence that people were pole vaulting over, or high jumping over the four-foot fence, we might be able to grant it. Because I don't think, I don't think high jump reaches seven feet yet, but that would be my...
So where do, I guess, how do I, how do I find comfort or, resides from my mind, when you drive up and down Long Lake Road, there's six-foot columns all up and down that road? With taller gates than four feet.
Not everywhere, and each one is granted on its own merits.
Yeah, okay, so that's what, that's my question right there then, is that how were they granted the permission and we're not granted permission?
I don't know, because that's one of the reasons why what we do is not something that sets precedent. So whatever was done prior is not a precedent that allows, that allows the simple granting because there's already five on the street.
So how did, I guess, I'm confused on that.
Okay, wait, wait, we're not going to argue about it. Okay, so any case we decide is decided on an individual basis, all right? So what we do in one case does not set precedent for another. So you can't compare yourself to another property for the simple reason that two properties are never identical and the situations are never identical. So I think you're hearing from us that we have concerns about the height, and I think you're still hearing that we have concerns with your counter offer. So I guess we're, what you need to think about when the public hearing's taking place is whether you want to stick with your request or whether you'll live with a decision that this board might make that may reduce that height. That's my suggestion to you.
How can we find middle ground?
That, that's my suggestion to you.
In a professional, pleasant way. I'm not, by no means trying to debate or argue, I'm just trying to say that when I go this way and that way...
I'm just saying that we're not here to negotiate, okay? That's my suggestion to you, and I think probably the chair will be opening the public hearing now, so...
And the last thing I want to say is that, to your point, the properties that I'm seeing that are up and down the road, there are properties that are, that are, you know, up along the road with the entrance, and then properties that are way back along the lake similar to this, where sometimes you can't see the house. So to your point, which is very valid, each, each individual case is case by case, but our scenarios are very similar because most of those homes...
Each home has its own difficulties, hardships, and we look at them individually, so you can't, they're not apples and apples. So each one is on its own merit, so we have to take that into consideration.
What is the, just like...
But we're going to, well, let's hear from the public first, and then we can, we can go back and talk a little bit more. I just want to make sure, is there anyone, I'm going to open the public hearing, is there anyone like to speak to this item? Okay, then I will close the public hearing, so I wanted to get that out of the way.
I have no questions for the...
Does anyone have any questions for the board? Okay, then I'll bring it back to the board if anyone wants to make a motion.
Well, I'm just going to say again, I feel like this is sort of a wider landscape setting, and I feel like the lower profile, especially with the size of these piers, is more in keeping with what you want to accomplish and will provide all the security you need at five feet tops.
That sounds reasonable.
I'll make a motion.
We gained a foot.
No, that's what we said, suggested six.
You were saying four, right?
Five foot here, four foot there is what we said.
Four feet is, is where we usually, I mean, that's the threshold, we're giving you the, well, suggesting, the motion's out there, we haven't voted on it, but five feet just to allow for the, for the gate.
Okay, so I misunderstood that, hence the reason I was probably responding in that...
Right, right now...
Yeah, we're going to...
We're going through, we're making a motion.
It's not a negotiation, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
Go ahead and make a motion.
In regard to the appeal at 1500 West Long Lake Road for the accessory structure including two three-foot wide illuminated, well, ground illuminated stone piers and a 14-foot wide wood grate, wood gate across the driveway, I move the request be submit, be approved as submitted with a maximum of five-foot height on the stone piers and the rest of the design of the gate to follow. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with 42-7.6 standards for the size of the accessory structure at the, at the dimensions we're discussing, compatible with the adjoining properties and the context. The accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood for the safety that it will provide for the new driveway, and the location structurally will not hinder or discourage the decent use of property due to its location 24 feet back from the property. I'll also move a dimensional variance be approved for it to be located at a location shown on the plan at the address mentioned, and again, at the five-foot height mentioned. Move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome given the, the apparent need for safety and traffic containment at that location. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the new driveway that's there, the unique circumstances of the busy Long Lake frontage. If this motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. The hold harmless must also be filed with the township, Bloomfield Township, for the gates.
Support.
Point of clarification, so you're giving five-foot piers and a four-foot gate, correct?
Right, the gate, as they've shown in the drawings, is lower than...
I don't think you mentioned the height of the gate.
Five-foot piers, four-foot gate.
We're sticking with the design...
We're sticking with the design that's been presented, so it's going to be proportionate based on, as the piers come down to five feet.
Just don't want there to be any question later on.
Yep, no, I agree.
Support as amended.
I was clarifying, however you want to do it.
Clarify, yeah.
I don't know, is four feet enough for privacy, for security? Can you climb a four-foot fence? I don't know.
Well, I think... You can't, you can't drive through it.
You can climb it.
Want to kind of...
Well, but the issue is people driving up there and not people walking up there.
I tried helping you, but you didn't hear me earlier, at any rate, okay, we have a motion now.
I make a very valid point here.
We're in the middle of a motion.
Yep, there could be a, a vote on the motion.
Yep.
Yeah, that would be good.
Okay, do you want to do that, a vote on the motion? Okay, so I have a motion, I have support, correct?
Yes.
Okay, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Congratulations. Carrie's, do you understand every...
I do not understand what you're saying. So I have a, I have a question...
You can talk to the planning department after the meeting.
They'll fill you in afterwards.
So I have a four-foot gate, a four-foot fence at the column that drops down proportion to like a three-foot...
No, you have a five-foot, five-foot pillars.
And then your fence appears to come up too.
The fence has drawn and submitted, drops down in the center, so we're going down to like a three-foot gate.
We'll put a different fence, it could be four feet high.
That's not what she said, so I'm just making sure I'm understanding what's taking place here.
You could have a four-foot fence, period.
Five-foot piers.
Can't exceed four feet, you can lower if you want.
The township can help you on that.
We'd be happy to.
We can certainly help you if you need to...
But just, she mentioned that as proportion to what's submitted, so we made that...
Which is why we clarified.
That's why we clarified.
Looks like about a one-foot dip.
Looks like a one-foot dip to me.
All right, so next item, we are at number fifteen, 505 Pine Way Circle.
Bet you don't like fouling the last one, do you?
Well, listen, I'm Robert Schuman from Metro Group Management, and this is Larry Brown, he's a resident, so what we are proposing to do is just replace the old existing steel that's all rotted with new gates only. The pillars are there already, and when the community was built, John Richards never got a permit to install these present gates, so that's why we are here.
Doesn't sound unusual, does it?
Ask for forgiveness.
So...
My gosh.
This is a replacement?
Yeah, I have no question.
Any question?
Eight feet high?
No.
You're not replacing the pillars.
The pillars are standard, they're eight, and the fence, according to what was presented, was six-foot. That's what's there.
Okay, so you'll...
That's what's there.
So it's a six-foot fence.
Okay, so it's a six-foot high fence.
With eight-foot pillars.
Okay.
They're not tearing down the pillars and building new ones.
No.
I'm not asking for that.
Six-foot at the lowest point.
Okay, how long have they been there, what'd you say?
Oh geez, I remember...
As long as the community has been built.
I remember when they went in, I can't tell you when that was.
Is that way a six, or is it go to eight foot at the edge? I'm looking at it.
Don't worry about it, it's a replacement, come on, guys.
We don't want to have a pole wall.
It's a replacement, let's not overthink it.
Yeah, okay, let's do it.
All right, I'm going to open the public hearing, does anybody like to speak to this item? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, with regard to the permission request and request for a dimensional variance at 505 Pine Way Circle, the entry gates to Whispering Pine subdivision, for the permission request, I am going to move that the permission request be approved as submitted based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven-point-six standards. The location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to its location or purpose, and in fact, will enhance the security of the association when, for the neighborhood. With regard to the dimensional variance, I'm going to move that it also be approved as requested based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because this isn't a structure that has existed for longer than I can recall, although I do remember when I went in, and is, certainly will do no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, in fact, the adjoining neighbors are the ones who are going to enjoy the benefit. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, this is a replacement of an existing fence, which certainly is not self-created, fences do deteriorate. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, all necessary permits must be obtained prior to construction, there needs to be a hold harmless statement on file, or hold harmless letter on file with the township for the gates.
Support.
Do I have a motion in support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, Sarah, thank you, congratulations, have a good evening. All right, next item, number sixteen, seventeen-eight-one South Gulf Ridge Drive. Is the applicant here? Seventeen-eight-one South Gulf Ridge Drive?
Come on.
A motion to move it to the end of the meeting, or adjourn at this point, or I mean, table?
Table, no, let's move it.
Let's wait and see if it's something that we can vote on without comment.
Yeah, I'm thinking we might be able to.
Yeah, too.
To the end of the meeting.
Okay, so one bit...
The HOA has, said they're not approving this project.
Right.
All right, we're going to move this to the end of the agenda.
Do you want to read it and try to process it?
Right now, oh.
Do you want to deal with it now?
I'm opposed to this project.
Well, you may want to...
Let's put it to the end of the agenda and let those who are here...
Might be public comments.
Oh, oh, if you want to make public comment.
I'm missing eighteen, is eighteen we move?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
How do you want to deal with this?
If you want to move it to the end of the meeting, whatever you want, I just don't want to make the date.
No, I understand.
If you want to take it now, that you certainly can, I think it's important that you hear the public comment.
Absolutely.
If the board decides after public comment that you still want to continue to table or take action, you can certainly do so, let's get their comments on the record.
Sounds like a good plan. I'm going to open the public hearing, then, if anyone would like to speak to this item. Please state your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Michael Barnes, I live at eighteen-hundred Moores Court, and I represent the Waukegan South Homeowners Association, and I'm also the Director of Architectural Review. This is a really difficult situation. I've been on the board since nineteen-eighty-eight, and not in one case have we ever denied a neighbor a request to improve their home. This is the first time that, just the blatant disregard to any regulations, any of the most basic requirements are forcing us to say, there's no way we could approve this, and we pray that this variance board sees the egregious nature of this. This is the first time I've actually seen what's going on, because he's not shown us any drawings or invited us in. I can tell you it's gone a lot further, it doesn't look like there's any railings that would keep people safe on this raised item. He's also raised the grade in the neighborhood on the western side and the entire rear. As one of your other applicants said tonight, with all the rains we've had, drainage is a very serious issue, and bringing in that much dirt and making it raised up so that the neighbors are going to receive it all when the rains come, it's a real problem. I just pray that you see how egregious this is and deny this request.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Alfredo Casab, I live at forty-five-fifty Coachmaker. I live immediately south of the subject property, and I've watched, yep, so forty-five-fifty Coachmaker, that's immediately south of it. So, there are several issues with this. When we first got the letter from the township that said, hey, we're seeking approval for an existing structure, we thought it might have been for those two little pergola things that you see back there, which went up probably in the last thirty days or so. All of this work that you're seeing here, that's, even though it says existing on the letter that we got, it's all gone up in the last sixty days, and I guess it's not surprising to hear that, you know, I was extremely surprised, because their home is in Waukegan, I know what kind of stringent standards they have, and I guess it doesn't surprise me that this homeowner didn't seek approval, but these, this petitioner will never be able to meet any of the requirements to have this approved. Number one, it's self-created, he is, he has just completely disregarded all setback requirements. I mean, there's a reason we have setback requirements in suburbia, so that you're not on top of your neighbors. He built that thing right up, right up to the fence line. There's, you know, he has a pool, I have a pool, he installed arborite, which have huge gaps between them, this is the first time I'm seeing the koi pond, that's a koi pond that he built, because the pool is actually like, if you look at the picture on the left there, the pool is on the top left, and the picture that you can see in the front there is a koi pond. Yes, he did also elevate the grade, you know, I don't know how much, but it's been elevated, so obviously it's going to cause drainage issues. There's no uniqueness issue here, he just regraded his lot and built what he wanted. You know, there's a standard of public interest in whether it's reasonably appropriate relative to the rest of the community. Here, you know, again, like I said, you, we have setback requirements for a reason. You can't say the reason is, I want to put X, but just ran out of land. It's a half-acre lot, he has completely taken out all of the lawn, so when you look at the front, the picture on the left there, there's a driveway, it's concrete, and then to the left, there used to be lawn, again, I don't see that part of it, because I live behind him, but it's all black rock, and there's a couple little putting green type things. I encourage every member of this ZBA to, to go drive by the house, at least the front, and you'll see what I'm talking about. There is no unnecessary hardship, the only hardship here is that he ran out of land to put what he wants, and again, that's not a hardship, that's a self-created issue. This is at best a recreational use, there is no functionality, I mean, he's not trying to store anything, et cetera, okay? Practical difficulties or exceptional difficulties, that's one of the standards, again, the only difficulty here is that he has a half-acre lot and he wants to build on every single inch of the property. You just can't have, you know, you just can't put structures all, all the way for, you know, without approval, number one, and for, you know, not, not valid reasons, and again, you guys know the standards here. Other additional concerns is, again, there's no grass left on the property. I'm not saying that it's impermeable, I don't know what he put underneath the rock, if he, if he put a vapor barrier or some other kind of plastic sheeting that is going to create an impermeable surface, I mean, clearly he's done that in the koi pond, but as to the rest of his land, I don't know what he's done. There are arborite lining the backyard, however, there are gaps, there are five-foot arborite, and, you know, you've got a gap this big. What you don't see in this picture is, to the left of where this koi pond is, is another raised structure, which is probably about, I don't know, two, three feet off the ground with, I don't know, I gotta look at it in order to be able to describe it, with filters. And so all you see is just white tubes and two, you know, two huge tanks, at least two huge tanks, which, you know, I can see them from my yard, you know, whenever I'm in the pool in the back, or my kids are in the pool, or my family's in the pool, we can see those things, because there just isn't, you know, enough screening. But I feel awful for his neighbor immediately to the west, because that is right on the fence, and it has got to be visible. I have no idea what kind of sound it makes, but I can tell you this, since this construction started last year, it's, the noise level has increased a little bit, obviously from the construction activities, but, you know, when you're in a pool, you play your music, right? Well, vegetation tends to absorb some of that sound. Replacing everything with rock or two-by-two concrete, you know, platforms which, you know, are separated but then filled in with rock underneath, that's just going to create more, a more of a bouncing effect for, for the, for the sound. So, I mean, that's, that's kind of all I have, my, I've not met this neighbor, he never came and asked for permission, or, or, I mean, not that he needs my permission, never came and asked for my opinion. The first time I ever had a dealing with this neighbor is last year, when I came home, I have fifteen maple trees on my property, and it's, as you can probably, or, I'm sorry, black walnut trees on my property, and as you can probably guess, they're about a hundred feet tall. Came home one day, and I saw one of them was now reduced to a thirty-foot stump. One of the trees did curve, I mean, trees grow and then they curve, right? And it was over his property, I'm not saying that he didn't have the right to do it, but I came home one day and he just cut the crap out of it. Again, maybe that's not a particularly relevant issue for today's hearing, but in the overall scheme of things, I would strongly hope that this board doesn't approve it, I would strongly hope that this board doesn't table it, I would strongly suggest and, and request respectfully that this court absolutely deny the application, and, I mean, as to whether the code enforcement officer goes out there and cites him for whatever other violations there may be, I would respectfully request that be done.
Thank you.
Just very briefly, I want to ask, I know this project's been yellow-tagged, it's been red-tagged, and it's been worked on every single day with no stoppage at all. I'd just like to ask the board, what is the process when a resident just ignores all the legal procedures that are in place, and then doesn't show up to discuss the variance that he's required to get to continue?
Well, we don't, we don't do that, okay? The building department will take care of any enforcement action that needs to take...
Will the building department take care of it?
Well, at this point, it's under ordinance enforcement, and they have an opportunity to at least apply. If they don't seek the remedies that, that are afforded to them, then, then we will take necessary steps to assure that they are compliant, in whatever fashion. I mean, it could be removal, it could be going to court, it could be, you know, seeking applications for the work that was being done relevant to a building permit, so there is more steps that don't be necessary, as a result of whatever action this board takes.
Okay, it does need to be removed, it's, it's not a, not a situation like we went from an eight-foot pillar to a five-foot pillar, it's, it's really egregious.
Yeah, and that'll be a decision of the board tonight, or, who they elect.
And I have, I have met this gentleman, and I have talked face to face, we have a commonality, I have two koi ponds. I appreciate the, the beauty of a koi pond, but good lord, what is he building? And why, and, and he knew very well, he needed my approval, or the association's approval to proceed, and he just blatantly ignored it.
Okay.
On everything he did, color change in his house.
Sir, we have to move forward, we still have a lot on the agenda.
I have a quick question, did the applicant actually submit this drawing?
I can see it.
Okay, are there any other comments? Did the applicant submit this drawing?
What are you looking at?
The whole package, well, the package.
They made an application on the applicant, yes.
Did this, okay.
Are there, are there any other comments, anyone like to speak that hasn't spoken already?
Okay.
Okay, then I'll close the public.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
Okay, so, with regard to the appeal at one-seven-eight-one Gulf Ridge, I'm going to start with the permission request. So I'm going to move that the request be denied as submitted, based on the information presented, the applicant did not demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven-point-six standards, because the size of the accessory structure is not compatible with adjoining properties based on the fact that it more than half, encroaches more than half of what is required by the ordinance, and is just not harmonious to the neighborhood or the township overall. With regard to the dimensional variance, I am going to move that it also be denied as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did not demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would not be unduly burdensome, because as was noted by one of the public comments, the homeowner could have constructed a smaller home and could have fit the deck that he wishes to have, and decided not to do that. There would be injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that the, the proposed item is encroaching heavily onto the setbacks that are set by the township. There is no unique circumstance with the property that we've heard, and this is self-created due to the fact that the homeowner, again, could have built a smaller home. And I'm going to add to the motion that the deck must be removed within thirty days of the approval of the meeting minutes, so I guess thirty days from next month's meeting.
I'll support that.
Carol, do I have a motion in support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. While I support the motion, I'm reluctant to deny without having the applicant make his presentation.
It's candidly to me, the fact that he's not here speaks volumes. Uh, and I think that that's his response to this whole forum.
It's already been seconded.
Alright.
Any other votes in motion?
The motion's been seconded.
Oh, it's been seconded, yeah.
So I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's denied. Okay, uh, number?
Seventeen.
What are we, seventeen? Sixty-eight ninety-five Telegraph.
We are requesting a variance of Sly Sandia six eight nine five Telegraph Road. We're requesting a variance to place a generator on the front yard technically of the property. There's an existing transformer that the generator will be placed next to. And uh, the hardship here was that our side yards are both entrances. The front entrance is on one side and uh, uh, another exit is on the other side of the building, on the north and south sides, as you can see there. And then the rear of the property is residential. Behind us, there's a little um wall there and then it's a residential area. So we wanted to avoid placing a generator near the residential area. It makes sense here, uh, we discussed it with staff, and it makes sense here to place it next to the existing transformer. And that is our variance request. The screening there, our landscapers trimmed the tops when they did not have. They've grown in a little bit since then, but our goal will be to fully screen the area uh, as soon as the generator is connected after permits and approvals.
Any questions? Alright, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Now I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Senator, I'll make a motion. Um, with regard to the dimensional variance at six eight nine five South Telegraph Road, um, for the variance for this generator, I move it be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the setup of the lot. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason that they're actually being courteous of the people behind them. Um, unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated considering the egress uh ins and outs of the property and it's not self-created. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within, within one year and all permits to be obtained prior to installation. And I do believe that the current evergreen plantings are sufficient. Yet if something were to happen to them, you may have to plant others.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nice have it, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
You too. Alright, we have uh, number eighteen was post, I mean, withdrawn, so we're on nineteen now.
Did you bring the whole country club, Leo?
Here we are.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, my name's Leo Savoy on behalf of Oakland Hills. And we've got our entire team here. Jim Stock is going to give the presentation. Uh, Scott here is the owner's rep representing Oakland Hills as part of the entire construction uh process. We've got Jim Butler, many of you know from PEA, Mark, our landscape architect. John from Newman Smith, and we have an intern right here that follows Scott around all the time. So we're excited about where we stand today. Uh, Jim is going to go through everything and then we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
It takes a team to do this. Uh, thanks for having us. We have a few items to discuss tonight, but what I'd like to do in, in some of these cases is understand and have you understand where we were just over a year ago and, and give you an idea of where we want to be at the end of this process. And so, uh, with this, this was back in fall of, of twenty-one. Um, of course, this was the clubhouse that we had here. Down the lower left, we had the, the learning center, the golf learning center, tennis and pool. Then we have the building up here, which is um, formerly known as the first tee building, now renamed as the Lifestyle Center. Um, adjacent to that, um, we'll talk about tonight of the four paddle ball courts. Just to the east of that, we have the environmental center and the maintenance building for, you know, golf course equipment. And then all the way to the east here, we have the residential property that, that makes up the, uh, the eastern half of the campus, or part of the campus, I should say. But, you know, I'd like to introduce what the clubhouse was. And it's, um, that's one of the first things the club, you know, said to us is we want to replicate what was lost um, back in February of twenty-two. So, I know it's not customary, it's not part of our, our, our variances tonight, but I wanted to give you a, um, an idea of, of what we're bringing back and trying to replicate. This is actually the clubhouse. I'm, I'm walking in the first fairway. Usually my ball lands off to the right here, but, um, but we wanted to under, we wanted you to understand that we were trying to, as best we could, really replicate what was, what was lost then. So, you know, the, the famous veranda that you see here, if this works, famous veranda that you see here and, and the, the replication of roof forms that were, that we had previously. This is the, um, a, a view of the clubhouse coming up eighteen. This is a view of the, the main entry and portico chair, um, looking back. Another member entrance over to the right here. Um, and this is the, the view of what you start to see when you, when you turn into the property. This is actually the, the, uh, the golf shop that happens here, portico chair that happens here. And actually, you know, the fact that we have these gabled roof forms that really mimic what was, um, what was previously there. Additionally, we've, we've also provided some renderings that, that really, you know, start to show the character that, um, we're, we're looking to replicate. And then again, of the, the famous uh, uh, veranda and, and column structure that looked out over the golf course towards the east. Additionally, I'd like to, um, there, there's a number of ways we can do this. Would you prefer that I give an overview of the different um, variances and permission requests that we are seeking first? Or do you just want to go one by one? I can do whatever you need.
Do an overview.
An overview, okay, okay.
Just highlight each of them.
Yeah, not, not a problem. So, so number one, I'm going to scoot this back just a, just a hint here. So over on the, uh, let's escape out of that. So number one, we have our accessory use, um, with our, I don't know why it's doing that guy, sorry. Number one, we have our accessory use, um, which is the greens and grounds facility that, that just nicks into the, the front yard setback in this location here. Number two, of course, is the, the clubhouse height, which we'll address. Uh, number three, we'll talk about our, our ground modern mechanicals in the southeastern portion of the site right here. Uh, number four, we have ground modern mechanicals on the western edge of our greens and grounds facility in that location. Number five, we'll touch on the fact that we have a, um, a taller retaining wall, which are our service yard happening here. Uh, number six, we talk about, um, the position of the greens and grounds facility as a clubhouse use in relationship to the residential property to the east. Number seven and eight, we'll, we'll speak to the lifestyle, um, roof and, and the fact that this accessory building is in the front yard of the, of the property. Number nine, we address the guard shack location, also as a, a small accessory use in the front yard. Ten, we talk about the relocation of the paddleboard courts, um, um, to permit this uh service drive to reach the service area of the lifestyle, but style building. We're almost there, guys. Eleven and twelve, we, we will, will address the location of the fuel pump island, the material bins, uh, for the golf course material. Thirteen, uh, thirteen is the perimeter fence, which I have just down here. And then fourteen, I can scoot over just a little bit. We have a little retaining wall, um, that's developed right along this edge here um, because we're, we're changing grades in that, this portion of the site. So, so I can go one by one and I'm prepared to do that. The first one, uh, any questions before I get started? Okay, um, number one, we're, we're going to talk about the greens and grounds building in the Maple, Maple Road front yard. And, and what I'd like to do in this case is start to give an overview of, of, um, how the site is configured and what we are trying to do. And, and one thing you'll, you'll start to notice over and over in some of these variances is the fact that, you know, between the, the, the golf course, um, first tee that you have here and the, the property line along Maple Road, you'll note the fact that we, we actually have a very narrow slice of land here. So we, we're trying to do a number of things. We, we have a valley parking area here. We have, um, it's shown on the engineering drawings. We have a detention pond here. And then we get into the material, um, um, area of the greens and grounds facility and then the greens and grounds facility itself. So you can start to see the fact that we had limited site to, to really organize these elements. And so what this, so what we've, how we've organized this, I'll show you the layout plan from an engineering standpoint. Then we'll bring up the landscape plan to show how you, how we've, we've screened and addressed some of these items. The first one we have here in magenta, we have the property line, the right of way of, of Maple Road. You'll see, see it takes a, a small jog right here. And of course, that's reflective in the, uh, front yard setback that happens here. The reason why we didn't move this building farther south is, I'm going to go one more slide here, is the fact that we have a number of utilities that already exist just to the south of this building here. In fact, that line right there represents an easement line. So that really told us where that building needed to happen north, south, within this piece of property. Therefore, we couldn't necessarily move the building any farther south to get it out of that front setback line. So, so with that, I believe we were, we are asking for a, a, a four and a half foot by seventy foot, seventy-six foot long um, variance, front yard variance here, about a four hundred and eighteen square feet just to, uh, accommodate the building in that position. And then again, um, we'll, we'll, we'll touch on this. To the left of the drive, we have our eight foot arborvitae that are inside the property line here. To the, uh, where'd my mouse go, or my hand go? To the right of the drive and actually turning down south, screening the building and screening it from the existing residents, which Oakland Hills owns, by the way. Um, those are, um, uh, ten to twelve foot planted Norway spruce trees. Any question before I go on? That kind of summarizes a bit, um, the, the first one. I could, I could keep going or we could address these one by one?
Can I say something?
Of course.
I, I, all of us, I think, have reviewed this in depth.
Okay.
And I have to personally say, I mean, this Oakland Hills has been, you know, a real gem for the community and has put us, you know, on the map in the US and globally, alright?
Um, I think we understand a lot of the problems you have in trying to redevelop this
and appreciate that you're trying to redevelop it to mimic what was there before because it was really, really something. So I personally don't feel that you have to go through each of these. I think that, I mean, that's my personal opinion. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it.
I agree.
Okay.
If there's like a specific one?
I'd like to learn and I'm familiar with what's, with what's been done, familiar with the property. It's half mile from my house. I'm almost more concerned to, to hear public comment and then see where we need to dig.
That's what I'm thinking.
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to accommodate.
I mean, not to cut you off and you'll, you'll talk as long as you want after public comment.
Well, then I'll open up the public hearing. Would anyone like to, uh, speak to this item?
Any public comment?
No public comments?
Oh, you speak to the whole?
The whole proposal, so.
Okay.
Yes, please. Just state your name and address, please.
Hi, my name is Murray Weichel, thirty-eight ninety Oakland Drive. I've ordered the south course with my, and also thirty-eight eighty Oakland Drive, my mother-in-law's house. First of all, I appreciate your, uh, service and what you do here for the community. I'm basically for this project, um, but I think that, uh, it has to be compliant. Um, in, in some ways, the process is broken. Our family's been here since seventeen eighty-three, one of the first residents of Oakland County. My grandfather was Murray Van Wagner, former governor of the state of Michigan, highway commissioner. Built the Mecklenburg Bridge, Blue Water Bridge, transportation buildings named after him. Military governor of Germany, took Patton's place and implemented the Marshall Plan. He took this piece of property for his home when he returned from Germany, implemented the Marshall Plan. One of the first homes in the subdivision. I served with honor on the subdivision association for many years as president. I was a caddy at Oakland Hills since nineteen seventy-three. Caddied in the first PGA championship when Gary Player won. Our family has concerns and questions. On the variances in the structures, there's fourteen going through tonight. Seems like an awful lot and could, some of these can be considered at a later date. There are no construction drawings. There are just renderings and a few site plans. I've provided a letter and I think Patty has provided to you. If not, I have copies with me.
They don't have them.
And, um, you know, I'm concerned about the traffic congestion, the rocks on Oak Hills and Oakland Drive. My daughter got run off the road and hit one of them. I don't think those are part of any variance, but probably should be if they're going to be there. The storm sewer and the infrastructure, I did the calculations. I gave them to, uh, one of my civil engineers and my water engineers and they don't think that they're adequate for the course and this project. Might be wrong, but I'd love to go over them with the engineers. I want to preserve the view corridor. We got a lot of pretty pictures, a lot of renderings. I've done over three billion dollars of development, uh, in commercial, residential, and we use renderings all the time. But things in the renderings aren't the things that I'm talking about, the issues. The noise and, uh, light pollution at night, midnight, one o'clock in the morning, there's noise and light pollution that we see all the time. Uh, there's insufficient restrooms for golfers on the course right now. I hope that's taken care of with these structures and these variances. Again, we're in support of this new clubhouse for Oakland Hills, uh, but these issues should be thoroughly addressed. This governing body should, um, empower its residents to have input on this. You see that there's hardly anyone here tonight. And the reason being there was not much work that got out. I think these meetings should be virtual or have an opportunity to dial in by phone. I tried to make a comment last night, I couldn't. A lot of people travel or are up north right now. I think to get the residents, information is important. As a resident, I got no information from Oakland Hills, none of these consultants, uh, nothing. They did meet with our subdivision board, I found out tonight, but it was a closed door meeting and no notes or information were handed out. Very few people have known about what's going on here. I'm also concerned about the construction traffic, which has been. I thank you for your time and consideration. I think this is a good project, but I think these details have to be worked out and maybe you should think about each variance individually and does it make sense and have to be done right now. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other comments, public comments? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing.
Great, thank you. Can I address those issues?
Please.
First off, I caddied at Oakland Hills too, right at the nineteen seventy-two PGA. So I think we're in the same boat there. I've been a member there. I started as a caddy. I became a busboy. I was thrilled to become a member and I eventually became president of the club. So I've been around there for quite some time. One of the things I've learned, both as being involved with the club and being involved with the township, was the, uh, value of engaging the neighborhood association. I called David Robinson, the president of the association, four or five times. He scheduled a meeting. We went and met with their board. They had control as to who was invited. Um, there were a number of people there and we presented the entire project to them. We took questions from them. There were only two minor questions from their board. And I also said, I encourage anybody that has any questions, you all have my cell phone number. my cellphone number, and I'll be more than happy to sit down with you and go through the project. I'm one of five members that are involved with the final design for the, for the clubhouse there, and we meet on average 10 to 20 hours a meet, a week on the different phases of it. So there, and in fact, when I saw the letter, when Patty forwarded on to me, I called Murray today and went through a lot of the issues with him and said, I would love to sit down and talk with you about it. And he said, I'll get back with you, and we can make, make an arrangement to get together. That was late this afternoon, around 4:30. In regards to some of the issues that he has within his letter, those rocks that were put out that his daughter ran into, those, those rocks were put out by the association. They're on the association property. They're in the association road right-of-way and have nothing to do with Oakland Hills whatsoever. There have been talk about flooding coming down Oak Hills Drive, and in fact, the association was very concerned about that. And I explained to them that I dealt with the road commission numerous times because the problem is the water comes down Maple Road and right down Oak Hills, and it wasn't until they put proper drainage into the roads there, the roads there are private, that it started to take care of the, the project. Mr. Weichel indicated to me when I explained that to him that he was not concerned there. He was only concerned about his particular property there. In terms of light pollution, as he indicates, I'm not exactly sure how far he is from the clubhouse there, but I do know he lives on, close to the tee box of the 18th hole, and the 18th hole is a par five, roughly about 500 yards or 1,500 feet from the, from the club. I know, I live on the 18th tee box of the north course, and I can see the lights from the halfway shack up there when I look out at night, but it's no different than looking down the street several hundred yards away. So, there is no real light pollution. We will adhere to all of the township requirements in terms of lighting there. We will work with the township every bit of the way, and we will work with the association every bit of the way because Oakland Hills wants to be a good neighbor with everybody. I think that pretty much addresses it. You'll see within the packets that we did the traffic study. The traffic studies, Patty will tell you, they was reviewed by the township's traffic consultants. We put the landscaping plan together. It was reviewed by Michael Dool, the township's landscape consultant there. Everything that we have here has been reviewed either by the RCOC, the Water Resource Commission, all the different consultants involved here. We've worked very, very hard to make sure that what we present here is something that can be embraced by the community. In terms of 14 variances, one of the, and I, I know you all know this, the biggest hardship that we have is all country clubs within Bloomfield Township are zoned R2. And R2 allows for country clubs as a permitted use, subject to township approval. So, when you take a look at the height of buildings, I believe the R2 district says the maximum height for a residential building is 30 feet. Again, we're operating in a district that handcuffs us to a certain degree, except for the site plan approval, which we're going through now. So it seems like a lot of variances, but when you look at the underlying facts that is causing them, you realize that we're just operating as we were before and looking, looking to go forward.
Leo, I have a question.
Yeah.
One of the item, and I'm, I'm curious, several years ago, we approved a submission for rather tall gates, if I remember.
I remember that.
Those gates obviously never went up.
About eight foot?
I, I actually think they might have been taller than eight foot, if I remember correctly. But anyway, I do notice in one of the line items, a guard shack with gates. I'm not assuming that, I'm, I'm not thinking that those, that those are the gates that we were originally approving. These are something a little bit more like the kind of gates you might, the gate arms.
Single arm?
That's what I'm, I just wanted to know. I'm just curious.
And we knew what you approved a couple of years ago, it has expired after 12 months.
Yep.
And we thought about doing it, but at the end of the day, didn't at that particular time.
Okay.
I have another brief question. So is your membership going to be increasing?
Uh, no, we're, we're, our, our stock membership is limited to 575. We do have clergy members. We have surviving spouse members. We have social members. At the end of the day, there are probably about 800 members in different categories, but the stock membership itself is limited to the 575.
And that's how you've been with the previous facilities and?
Exactly.
What you're doing now is new amenities, not an increase?
No, there's, there's no change in use whatsoever. All we're doing is, actually, I shouldn't say that because when we were at the planning commission last night, Jim went through an entire slide, which he will not go through tonight, I promise, I know we want to get out of here, showing the, where the carts will now be underneath the building and a tunnel coming out, and the delivery traffic will be coming up the service drive, so it doesn't have to come through the parking lot. Because prior to that, you had kids going to the pool, kids going to the tennis courts, you had carts coming down to go down to the range, you had all your food deliveries, all of that, and then you had the valets going there. And it was, I'm surprised that there hasn't been an accident in all these years, and it was a real safety concern. So with the way it's set up now, the only thing that's really coming into the parking lot itself is just the cars to park there. And everything else is going up and down the service drive there, so we can take away that, that issue. So we, we've really spent, in fact, John Kelly, who's, oops, John Kelly, who was on the planning commission, after he asked some questions last night, and he, he just looked and said, very ingenious. And that was a real compliment coming from John because he does a lot of, lot of development there. So we just spent so much time trying to make it better and, and trying to recreate what was there.
Thank you.
Well, one other following question, because I don't know it very well. Where there always two curb cuts to the, so these are roughly the same ones?
They're exactly the same location.
It's just gonna create an internal street?
Correct.
So I, I wanna ask the board here. How do you wanna proceed in terms of listening to their variances? I mean, I know some are just because of the situation, and would it be important to document them in this meeting in case there are people that think we, we're not just going over there? Are we gonna look at it as a whole? How do you wanna pursue with this entire thing, Madam Chair?
Well, that's the board. I mean, there, there is quite a long list here, and some of these variances, I know everyone had an opportunity to look through them thoroughly, and I was just even looking at my notes here. So, I mean, if everyone's comfortable with them, with the types of variances that we're looking at, and we know it's, it's really just due to some of the, because of how it's, it's zoned residential, unless there's something that really stands out.
I have an idea. They had talked earlier about, like, you know, just in a quick overview, they were like, and we'll dive into this reason why later. I mean, those sound like those may have been things that weren't just the way they were before.
No, no, well, fine.
Yes, some of it, you're right, like the Greens and Grounds building, it was actually further to the west.
Right.
We moved it to the east.
And combined.
And we are, we're 50 feet to the adjacent neighbor, and it's, it needs to be 200 feet, I believe. And, but Oakland Hills owns that property.
So those seem obvious, and I don't mean to cut you off, I apologize.
Okay.
Those seem like really, you know, smart moves. Are there things in there that you're like, you know, we, you know, the R2 zone, you know, I understand you're not gonna be building a clubhouse like that, that would ever fit within 30 feet of height. You had talked about a couple, I remember one, you said, well, we'll bring that up later.
Sure, sure.
And if they are easy highlights, sometimes I think it might be helpful to just document that, but if you disagree, feel free to say, eh, no.
I would prefer to doc, I would prefer to document it one by one.
Yes. Okay.
So that way.
I think that's a smart thing to do, but I'm not in charge here.
I understand.
So.
But without a full presentation, could you simply take each one and say what the hardship is and why you're doing that?
Sure.
That's smart, right?
Absolutely. So, yeah, absolutely. We, we, we talked about one. Are we, are we okay with that?
Yeah, with the utilities?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want, do you wanna vote on each one as, as we?
No, because we'd have to make a full motion for each one.
So let's go to, let's go to number two, which is clubhouse height. So, so here we're asking for a, a 14-foot variance.
Revity.
Revity. Yes, sir. Yeah, revity.
Revity. Thank you.
He knows me too well. We're asking for a 14-foot height, and, and, and the reason why is the fact that we, we have mechanical units now located in a, in a mechanical well on the roof. That means we, these are, these are tall. We, we increased the roof pitch to, to screen the units from, from grade. And we also have ductwork through this building, something that they didn't have previously, so that starts to raise the clubhouse. Previously it was about 40 feet. Now we're at 44 feet, so we're just slightly taller than what was there originally. I'll go, keep going. Greens and Grounds Mechanicals. Here we have a, a generator and a transformer located in the rear yard here of the Greens and Grounds facility, obviously well-screened from the, the side yard between the two properties, and also from the road here, and additionally from the golf course.
Can I, can I stop you for a minute?
Sure.
Is, am I correct in understanding that that house that you're showing is actually one that you own?
Correct.
So as much as it's a house, it's yours, it's your house?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Next, we have some ground monitor equipment on the east side of the building too. These are, these are condensers for the mechanical systems for the office portion of the Greens and Grounds facility. Here, these are also screened by arborvitae at the property line, Norway, Norway spruce at this property line, and then by burnum bushes that kinda wrap around the corner of the building here. Here we talk about, this is a, this is a piece I wanted to get into a little, in more detail. Now we, as Leo explained, now this, the lower level of the lifestyle building is now our receiving area. So now we have deliveries happening here. We also have trash removal here. We have four dumpsters here. Those dumpsters are a certain height. We have an eight-foot-high retaining wall and screen wall, screening that from Maple Road. We also have a, a small section of that on the, on the other side. You can just see off to the corner right here. And then, but I wanna show you the fact that we have screened that area, not only, we, we've screened the receiving area, because we didn't want you to see the, the, the delivery vehicles and, and the trash receptacles. So, so we have arbor, eight-foot-high arborvitae at the property line, and also in addition, we have this screen wall area. So that is a new piece of the, of the project, I would say. Deliveries essentially come in the lower level here. They go underground in a service tunnel and then into the lower level of the clubhouse. Some detailing, elevations of that wall. Again, it'll be part, painted dark green. Want that to be recessive as a color. The next one, we talk about the, the Greens and Grounds building as it encroaches into a residential district. So even though we, let me go to the next slide here, even though we are 201 feet from the eastern property line here, technically, we are only 50 feet away from the western property of this house, and so we're asking for 150-foot variance in this portion of the property. We talk about the lifestyle building height and the fact that it's in the front yard. So again, we, we talk about this existing building that we have here. The reason why we're, we're talking about this is that it did have a portico chair on the building. You can see this dotted structure here. We are removing that, actually reducing the, the mass and scale of the building to permit the construction of the service tunnel. And so what we're doing is proposing to mirror what happens on the east side of the building and really mirroring on the west side of the building. So actually reducing its scale a bit. Other than that, we're doing nothing to the building. Guard, guard shack, front yard location. We are actually reconfiguring this drive to permit two lanes of traffic in, two lanes of traffic out, to help with queuing. So, this required this guard shaft to, guard shack to be relocated slightly, and, and we're planning on using the existing structure, just relocating it. Paddleboard court location. Here you can start to see, maybe if I zoom in a bit, you can start to see the existing configuration of the paddleboard courts. There's really three in the east-west direction, one in a north-south direction, to, to allow for our service drive that, that's happening here. We are rotating and repositioning these two courts here to be side-by-side with one another, just to be able to permit that service Same style court, whole nine yards. We're almost at the end, guys, I, I promise. Move over the cursor here, scoach. In this portion of the, I'm gonna go one more, guys, for you. In this portion of the site, you will see material storage bins. So customarily with a, with a golf course, you'll, you'll need to stock sand and topsoil and mulch and those types of materials, and those are in bins constructed to eight-foot-high concrete, concrete walls to contain those materials. Here we have a, a fuel island to fuel the maintenance vehicles for the course. And, and if you, you think about the course operationally, you know, in the, in the winter hours, or in the winter time, these items aren't used, and it's, it's only used by the trained maintenance staff as well. So I'd like to also point out the, these, these things are well-screened from Maple Road as well, with a continuous eight-foot-high arborvitae hedge, and additionally from the golf, golf course side as well. 13, we talk about a perimeter fence height. I'm gonna defer to Mr. Collins and Mr. Savoy to talk about that a bit more, if you'd like.
Why don't you show the blue going through the neighborhood?
There you go.
We went before the design review board last Wednesday, and we had agreed that within the neighborhood, we would take the chain link fencing down and put some type of six-foot-high decorative fence. The design review board wanted to see that happening along Maple Road and Lasher Road. And the issue with that is we didn't notice for those, for those two areas. So what I said to the design review board, what we said to the planning commission last night, that we will commit to taking the fence down at the completion of the project prior to the certificate of occupancy. We will enclose the golf course with landscaping, boulders, things like that, to protect the golf course that way. At, at some time between now and then, if the powers that be say, we want a fence there, then we will come back to the ZBA and petition the ZBA for a fence along Maple and Lasher Road. We would do the same thing with Oak Hills and Oakland, and if we decide to do it with landscaping, we wouldn't put that up. But in the meantime, we left it on there for the ZBA, since it was properly noticed for that. And talking with the residents there, they were extremely appreciative of, of A, getting rid of the, the cyclone fence, and B, more importantly, getting rid of the barbed wire on top of it.
So we're taking that off as a request, then?
No, we're gonna leave the, we're going to leave Oak Hills and Oakland on as the request.
Okay.
And in terms of the, to, to comply with the design review board and to comply with the township board when we go before them, that, that we will agree to take that fence down and either fence in the golf course with heavy landscaping, or do it with a matching fence that they have approved.
If I'm understanding these, these requests, other than fencing and the height of the, the clubhouse, it appears to me that the bulk, if not the remaining, all of the remaining items are along Maple Road.
Correct.
I mean, I commend you. I think that it streamlines things, probably keeps all the noise more towards Maple, which could benefit, you know, the Oak Hills.
Also eliminates the light pollution issue from the answer, from the auxiliary buildings.
True.
Is there one more variance?
There's one more.
This 14?
Yes, sir. One, one more. We're, we're, we're almost done, guys. Lastly, along the, the pool deck that happens here, we're sculpting the grade four feet. Lastly, along the pool deck that happens here, we're sculpting the grade four feet down. So this turned into a retaining wall condition. We are six feet at this edge. We believe we have a relatively simple solution and that's on us. We should have caught this. But, you know, this is an existing fence that happens here and right now, there's Arbor Vady that also protects the privacy of the pool deck itself. But we believe we have enough room on site to really move the parking just slightly to the east and be able to install a planting bed against that retaining wall, to screen that retaining wall as well and also, you know, move the sidewalk back in this purple, magenta area and just be able to connect the walks in that manner. So... And that was it. That's all 14 of them. Any questions?
Just a perspective, how we looked upon the review of this and how we called out these variances, is that as Leo indicated, the property's own single-family. So we have to use the R2 classification, which is, we're very accustomed of a single-family home having front, side, rear setbacks, you know, 40 feet, 35, 16. All the accessory structure we've been talking about tonight, well, that's what those elements are on their site plan besides the clubhouse. So the lifestyle building is an accessory building. It can't exceed 14 feet in height. Yet, just that improvement is, you know, up to 20. The grounds and greens building, that's an accessory structure. All those utility, all the ground-mounted utilities that are being suggested be screened, those are all accessory structures. So that helps you in looking at this, that that's why their permission requests or their variances, because we're applying those single-family classification or standards to them.
That makes perfect sense.
Understood.
Because who wants to tackle?
The public comments are closed. Public hearing's closed right now.
Really?
So...
Okay. Do we have a motion or... I don't even know.
All right. I'll take a stab at this. All right, Karen. All right, what I'm going to do is lump these together, okay? And I'm not going to read every single one. Okay, so I'm going to start with respect to Oakland Hills Country Club, the property located at 3951 West Maple Road. I'm going to start with the permission requests. And there's four permission requests that they've submitted. And I'm going to move to approve those permission requests because they comply with Section 42-7.6 standards. And I note that the standards in that section really are more applicable to residential homes. And so I'd probably start by stating that one of the hardships that the country club faces is the fact that it has R2 zoning and the regulations were designed to deal with single-family residential homes and not structures of this nature. And that's probably the biggest hardship that applies to everything they're requesting. But I find that when viewing this as a country club, that what they're proposing is really compatible and what you would expect to see, the buildings are what you would expect to see in a country club. And none of this is self-created. The only reason they're here is because of the fire. With respect to the dimensional variances, and I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 12, correct? I would move to approve those because the applicant has demonstrated practical difficulty and specifically for the reasons I've already stated, the fact that R2 zoning applies to this country club, the fact that they're only here because of the fire, the fact that there is limited area that you could really put buildings on and it's really limited to that area along Maple, because you're not going to put the buildings in the middle of the country club, the fact that there are utilities that exist that dictate where these buildings might be located, the fact that there's new building codes that are in place resulting in buildings being hired, duck work being required, mechanicals on roofs, things of that nature that didn't exist when this building was first built. For all those reasons, I believe that they have shown that there are unique circumstances applicable to this property that would support the granting of a variance. I don't believe any of the variance requests would be detrimental to anyone in the area and clearly, it's not self-created. All those things having been said, if the motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. A single-family affidavit must be submitted for Greens and Grounds building. Use of the sports court is limited to daytime hours. Additional evergreen planting shall be required to screen the accessory structures from public view and I believe the plans are sufficiently showing screening.
Interrupt you.
Yeah.
The sports court, I'm assuming you mean the paddleball?
Yeah.
And that paddleball is an evening event.
Correct.
Goes to, I believe, we have either 10 or 11 o'clock approval. And it's lit at night.
Yes. Oh, okay.
The tennis courts are not lit and they end...
Okay, so use of the tennis courts would be limited to daytime hours?
Yes, that was the intention.
Use of the paddleball courts are...
As previously approved.
As previously approved.
Pickleball, but yeah.
No, it's paddleball.
Is it pickleball? I was going to add to that.
Birmingham Country Club, that's not a...
Additional evergreen planting shall be required. And as I said, I think your landscape plan is sufficient. A hold harmless must be filed for the gate. An additional evergreen plantings... I'm not going to add any more plantings. I think you have sufficient landscaping.
Support.
And let me know, anyone, if I forgot something.
No, but thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
So I have a motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very well done.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We have one left.
We have one item that we...
We have one more, but nobody's here for that.
Move to the end. Does anyone hear for... It was number four. 2867 Corville Drive.
Can we do it?
Yeah, I think so.
I think this is something we can do today.
Yeah, I'm taking it.
Well, you have to open up the public comment.
Are there any public comments? I mean, I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak? I'll close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, with regard to the permission request at 2867 Corville Drive, I'm going to move that the permission request be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. Location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to its location or visual presence on the property. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Second. Support.
All right, I have a motion and support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Done.
All right, done. All right. Very good.
Need a motion to...
Listen to adjourn.
Adjourn meeting. So move.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Next one is September 12, 2001.
You're a brother Tom, don't you?